Welcome, everybody.
I think I was going to get fired if I didn't do the proper thing.
Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting for October 21st. We are being recorded as well. And I would like to begin the meeting with any public participation. Anybody here to speak to anything? You can see none. If we can move on to the approval of the minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes from Thursday, September 9th, 2021.
Okay, in that summer. And what I'm going to ask folks to do if you're making a first motion tonight or seconding one, just because it's time with the masks to get the right person. If we could just give a little wave to the panel, please.
I made the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will second.
Thank you, Lucas. Any further discussion, everyone? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? No? Thank you. Next, update and a vote of legal retainers.
I can speak now.
Okay.
So it's a three-year legal retainer. Nothing has changed as far as coverage or amount. Our law office has not increased any retainers as a result of COVID-19. So we've not had any increase until last year. So the retainer has the same amount for the next three years.
Thank you.
Any discussion or questions for Fred?
I would just like to say thank you for everything you did last year. I mean, we had a lot of meetings. We had a lot of working with all the different unions on, you know, getting through COVID. And it was great working with you. You really did a lot.
Well, it was nice working with all of you and getting to know each other, too.
Are you sure?
I look at Les McKinnon.
I was well behaved.
You were, and you were.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the legal representation agreement by and between Silver Lake Regional School Committee and the Department of Law Office as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, my friends.
Thank you all.
The MASSS Awards recipients.
It's really shocking. That's like concerning the amount.
Tonight, I'd like to recognize two students, Haley Beatrice and Cole Wright. Cole hits his stand. Haley is not able to be here tonight. She has an athletic event that she is at, but thank you, Cole, for attending. Each year, the Mass Association of School Superintendents recognizes two Silver Lake students for academic excellence. To be selected for this award, students must be in the top 5% of their graduating class. Tonight, I would like to recognize Haley Beatrice and Cole Wright. Both Haley and Cole have distinguished themselves in pursuit of excellence during their high school career. Unfortunately, Haley could not be here tonight. Haley has been recognized as a scholar athlete who received the Character Award for JV basketball and the KETT student leading scholar athlete for varsity field hockey in 10th and 11th grade. She is a driven leader who currently serves as the class president, captain of the varsity field hockey team, and vice president of Best Buddies. Haley has also served the community by dedicating her time to help a variety of community events. Haley is considering a career in physical therapy. In elementary school, she entered when we played basketball and had hopes to go to physical therapy. She had such a positive experience that she hopes to open her own physical therapy practice. She would love to create a well-staying atmosphere for children with special needs to come and use the equipment and help them to strengthen themselves. She has also worked with many children with special needs through Best Buddies, an organization called Coastal Snap, where she has taught those with disabilities to gain the basketball and yoga. Cole, Cole Wright. Cole has never received a term, semester, or annual grade below an A.
Wow.
This is especially challenging considering that Cole has taken most of his classes. He knows that his writing skills have improved dramatically at Silver Lake, particularly in AP Lang English during his junior year. He believes that learning to write effectively and persuasively is by far one of the most useful skills he has developed over his high school career. Cole is diligent, as exemplified by his grades, but also in his commitment to learning. He has a natural desire to learn about things that come to his mind. For example, he wanted to learn how to invest, so he read several books and did research to learn how to effectively invest. Cole works to balance his interests and talents. He plays sports year-round, plays at the marching and concert band, is on our Student Council and National Honor Society. He is our class section leader and holds the two-mile team season record. Cole has devoted hours serving community organizations and events such as Kingston Fire Department, St. Joseph's Parish, Garden of Peace, Matthew Sutcliffe and Napoleon Street Concession Stand. Cole is considering a biochemistry major with the idea of engineering pharmaceuticals. The complexity of life, particularly cells and small organisms, is of great interest to him. Please join me in congratulating both Haley and Cole for their commitment to excellence.
about you. And I don't know if any other school committee members have any comments, but I'm sure from what you've done to date, you can be extremely successful in the future, and we wish you all the best in all of your endeavors.
Thank you.
Great job.
It's fantastic.
The Mass Association of School Committees Joint Conference, as you folks know, every year around this time, they're, as I said, doing the annual meeting. And you've probably got the brochure in email. You should have gotten the brochure in mail. Last year, we appointed Jason to be our delegate. Jason and I have talked about this. He is attending and would be willing to be our delegate once again. It's in two weeks. Is the first week in November?
It's the first week in November. The delegate assembly is Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., and it's going to be held in a hybrid fashion for those who aren't comfortable attending in person or who can't make it down to Hyannis, but I will be attending in person.
You want me to make a motion?
Yeah, if you would like to.
So I'll make a motion to nominate Jason Fraser to be our joint conference delegate for the conference.
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question for Jason. Are you going to be appointed or nominated for a position on the board? I believe you already sit on it, correct?
So right now, I am the chair of Division III, which is southeast Massachusetts, so I am a member of the board, but I've been nominated for a position on the executive board.
Okay, I thought I saw that in one of the letters I sent. Okay. So can you, at this conference, is that where they vote those positions?
They do, but I'm currently running unopposed, so typically what happens is one person does vote the slate, so I would not be in a conflict to be the delegate.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, is if you needed support, then I would offer myself to that.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I believe that it was the support of Halifax, Plinton, Kingston, and Silver Lake, who all endorsed me for this position two years ago, that allowed me right now to run unopposed. So I appreciate the support of the four school committees and the three teams.
Well, we appreciate everything you do for us and our communities, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're a wonderful asset to us and every other committee that you choose to be part of. Is there any further discussion? If other people can attend, so if anybody has interest in attending any part of the conference, please, you know, contact Cameron and make that happen. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Jason as our delegate?
Aye.
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks again, Jason.
Thank you, Paula.
Coastal Snap.
Do you believe we may have a guest speaker, or is that going to be?
So Coastal Snap had approached me to ask Paula for a little bit of time, just to remind the community of the program, and I heard that some of our recipients of MASS's awards actually participated in being student leaders from the high school. Coastal Snap is basically an adaptive program for students with special needs, so they can enjoy sporting and camping activities and art activities that a lot of us take for granted. We do have a dedicated group of parents down here in the Silver Lake region who did put together an adaptive basketball program pre-COVID, and they are desperately trying to get back on their feet because they understand the needs of the students, particularly the students with special needs, to have these outlets besides just in their academic setting in schools. So they are not quite at the point yet where they're about to begin programming. I think that's going to be just pending some organizational things and also some health items that they're trying to work through right now. A lot of those children are medically fragile, and we need to be very careful with what kind of situations we put them into. I believe Coastal Snap would be reaching out to Michaela in the future, looking for potential opportunities for high school students to once again act as peer coaches and also be able to receive some community service hours in that act as well.
Thank you for that update. Vaccination rates, as we all heard from our prior meetings and what's been publicized November 1st, is the deadline or the first line in the sand for vaccination rates to be over the threshold of 80%, so that students and staff can attend school without wearing masks, unless of course they're not vaccinated or they choose to continue to wear masks. So the superintendent will provide us an update on there. We are.
Sure. Our middle school current vaccination rate, this is staff and students combined, is 59.73%. Our vaccination combined rate at the high school is 64.34% as of October 18th. Recently, our nurses received access to M-I-I-S, which we talked about last meeting, about the possibility of gaining access to that information. And through that portal, they are able to obtain both staff and student percentages separately as well as combined. I wanted to just remind you of the state guidance as of October 15th. If a school demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% or more of all students and staff in the school through an attestation form submitted to DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, then vaccinated individuals in that school will no longer be subject to mask requirement. Whether or not a school or district avails themselves to the 80% vaccination offering is a local decision. So I just, I wanted you to be aware of that. And so one of the things that we had started to talk about in the last meeting and that was presented through the Department of Education's release of information are different forms of proof that could be considered. At this point, we have not asked for other forms of proof other than the M-I-I-S, as this is a verified source of information. If you were to choose other forms of proof, then you would be putting that verification process in the hands of the school nurses. There are several forms that are considered acceptable by the state, but may not be acceptable to the school committee and may not be the best option in terms of our ability to verify the validity. The two additional items that, in briefly speaking with the nurse lady, needed that the nurses would feel more comfortable with if we were to go down this road would be vaccination cards or a letter from a person's physician stating that they had been vaccinated. They are less, much less comfortable with a letter of attestation where a person just writes that they've received the vaccine. That is, however, allowable per Department of Public Health and DESI guidance. So tonight, I'm posing the question to you as to whether or not with the vaccination rates that I have presented to you, whether or not you want to, whether our nurses should begin soliciting additional forms of verification, or if you're comfortable staying with the more official and verified by the state portal of vaccination rates. Be sure for that.
So I have a question. I don't remember the date that the kids were eligible for this, but do we have an idea either from the teachers? I don't know if the union has an idea, or if we have an idea of the students, whether we're going to hit that 80%, or is there more than 20% of either the teachers or the students that are adamant about not getting vaccinated? Just wondering, because if we're never going to hit that number.
So the student vaccination rate at the middle school is 54.81%. The high school vaccination rate for students is 62.7%. The middle school vaccination, and again, this is through M-I-I-S portal only. The middle school staff vaccination rate is 90.24%, and the high school vaccination rate is 74.84%. And we continue to offer vaccination clinics through Kingston Community School, and we continue to remind the community in all three communities, Halifax, Plinton, and Kingston, that they are eligible for vaccinations at the Kingston Intermountain School, Department of Public Health.
Eric, if you're asking for my insight, I really have no idea if the people who aren't vaccinated, whether these students who staff are, you know, are definitely don't want to get vaccinated, or if there are just people who haven't done it yet. So I don't even really have any insight about the staff on that, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
I could share that the number from the state system is not 100% accurate either. We are aware of some instances where it's not reported by the state, but the individual can show that they are vaccinated, or that the state isn't showing that both vaccinations have gone through when they have. It also is only for those who live in Massachusetts, so if someone was vaccinated out of state, either lives out of state or moved in from a different state, they wouldn't show up.
Can I ask a very, just a clarifying question? It's probably fairly naive, but if I got vaccinated, I assume that the, it's in the state numbers. So if I got vaccinated, I got my second vaccination, I've got my card, what's driving the state numbers? Like to get a doctor's note or show a card? Isn't there a duplication? And I realize the state system knows that it is, you know, not 100%, but isn't, shouldn't those already be in the numbers? What am I missing here?
Should is the key word.
So then, just hypothetically, if we go down this road and in a perfect world, all the, everybody who is legitimately vaccinated is in the state system, and, you know, you've got the whole, you know, confidentiality, blah, 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 how would, how would we go above getting prior to doctor's notes from people that think they're already in these numbers? You know?
Well, we would, we would put out a request to students and staff, asking them if they would provide a particular form of evidence that we deem appropriate. And then the nurses would need to then compare that information with what's in M-I-I-S to see whether or not it's a duplication of effort, okay, if it's already in there, the fact and numbers match up, or we have examples of people who are not in the system, and then the nurse would need to then determine whether or not this is a verified case.
We don't, we don't really know how the data is pulled into M-I-I-S, so we wouldn't be able to say if you got your vaccination at a local doctor, there's a high probability you're not in our numbers. Could you bring that in? It would just have to be a blanket.
And everybody would have to, so like, even if you know, like.
But you wouldn't have to, but you would, you could willingly provide that information.
But they, but the nurses can see right now, like, if I work here, they could see Emily Davis vaccinated. So whether or not I brought my card in, you would see my name there, and then I could bring it, and if my name hadn't been there, they would now see that it was there. But you would be checking every single person. You wouldn't be saying, hey, Emily, we don't have your name on this list. Can you provide it? So you'd be adding that burden to the nurses of going through every employee and student and verifying that they are on that list.
That is my understanding.
And do you have any understanding of what, I heard, I can't remember if it was Baker or, I just lost his name, DESI?
Riley.
Thank you. Said that early next week, they would be speaking more about the mask mandate and making a further decision.
Yes, November 1st deadline is coming up. I do not know. I do not have insight as to whether or not that will be extended or removed. What I, what I do know is that we don't have a vaccination for younger students that would play into the decision. What I do know is that we have been fortunate that we have had low incident rates here in our communities overall. So it's, again, but then we are masked. So I, again, not being a medical expert and not knowing, not being on the commissioner's team, I don't know where their discussions are going, and I also live with the governor and the Department of Health that are also involved in those conversations.
I just don't know if everybody's aware that there is a case before the Supreme Court in Massachusetts challenging the authority of DESI to institute a sweeping universal mask mandate, and they are scheduled to meet October 26th. So that also may change the outcome of what's going to happen moving forward.
So just throwing it out there, but knowing that we're not really close to 80%, although I don't know how fast we're increasing each day, and also not knowing what DESI may or may not do, or what the Supreme Court may or may not do, I'd almost suggest that we pump this until next month to make a decision. I mean, if we exceed 80% next week, then maybe we could, you know, schedule another quick meeting just to deal with this if we needed to, maybe after hearing from DESI. But just with so many unknowns, I just feel like it's maybe premature to try to come up with this and add the burden to the nurses when maybe we don't need to, because that would be a big undertaking that they would have to start now.
If people can pull over the listening and the question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sort of reluctantly in the same boat as Eric, like, super reluctantly, like, I'm hanging on the edge of the boat by, like, you know, my fingernails here, because this is a very frustrating process for all of us for a variety of reasons. I give the staff just a huge amount of kudos to getting to the numbers that you're at now. I mean, 90.24% at the middle school and 74.80% at the high school is fantastic. I mean, lovely. We'd like to get the high school over 80%, but I mean, in general, we should be at 100% if possible, if people can have a vaccine. It seems to me the numbers that you're giving are really resulting, show that the student population is the population that's not driving the number for the most part. And I would just say that, you know, we do, as a school district, have our nurses check vaccines for a variety of other vaccines that we have on our dockets, like MMRs and all the other things that we have. So I'm wondering, sort of, how do they do that? And they do that by doctor's notes. We don't have vaccine cards for those, but they're essentially doctors' reports, so I don't understand why they wouldn't use the same protocol, or why it would be burdensome to add that protocol, and because we already do that for all the other vaccines that they're required to have. So I guess, I understand punting for a month, but I'm just saying, I don't understand why we can't just put this in our same protocol that we do, or procedure that we do for our other medical requirements that the students have. You know, I would push for that, and I'd push for that now. I don't have a problem with that.
I just, as a parent, would I have to now go to my doctor and get that piece of information for my child? I mean, that's, that's a burden now you're putting on a parent, so if I don't do that, then I think that adds.
No, I totally understand. I mean, it depends on where you got your vaccine, right? I mean, that's the big issue. Most of the time, you go to your normal primary care physician to get your children's vaccines, right? In this case, you can get it in, umpteen different places, and theoretically, you would report to your doctor, or somehow they would get that report, and it would be added to the same table that goes to the schools anyhow. Is that, is that the issue here? I mean, like, if you called your doctor, is it not on that table? Because I know that, like, if I call my, if I call my doctor for my son, well, I don't anymore because he's 18, but if I did, it would be on there.
My vaccine's not on my doctor's.
Didn't Fred say at one of our meetings that we could not ask about COVID vaccines, even though we can ask about other vaccines? Am I misremembering that?
No, you can ask for COVID vaccines. You can require them.
I see, okay.
But there's no prohibition against asking.
Okay.
Chris, we will respond. Was it answered?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the need to build any measured burden in trying to get to 80% by alternate means and assistance in place for the state. We're not close. I think by, by not being close, 20% off, let's see what DESI and the Supreme Court have to decide next week, and if we need to have an emergency meeting to take a stance, then we do. Otherwise, we're splitting hairs to try and get from 59 to 61 by having the mistakes in the system discovered.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to address what you were saying. You were saying that we already, we already have a process for the other vaccines. My understanding is that that process is done at the beginning of the year and already done, so by saying we'll use the same practice, that means starting over again, and it does add to the workload. It's not like it's just included in the workload, because that task is already, I think, already done for the year, or to think that they would have all the immunizations at the beginning of the year.
It's ongoing throughout the year.
Okay.
Students' physicals are different dates of the year.
Right. I'm likewise in favor of basically punting it. The one thing that I think you might want to do is publish the actual rates to the parents, and we'll see if that influences behavior at all. You know, either the community will go in on it and work to do without, or we'll be stuck waiting until DESI rolls it back.
So we are able to have a chart on our endemic resource center that could be updated as needed, whether that may, I think the recommendation was monthly because they're not seeing large, big changes. We could try bi-weekly, or we could go monthly, but we can, same way that we have a chart on there for cases, we can add a chart and note that, that this has been added to the website so that they realize that's there and they can.
I think you might want to send it out through one of the parent emails initially and refer them to that point, and then we'll see what the community does.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I'll make the motion if you don't motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Principal's Report.
Hi, good evening. So we just wrapped up our three-day VAS accreditation visit yesterday. The group, the team that came, we were six visiting members. They commended us for our school culture, respect, pride, student confidence, our facilities, our curriculum and course offerings, and our student-teacher relationships that were evident throughout their three-day visit. They recommended that we continue to work on our UVD and written curriculum across all departments, that we develop a bell schedule that includes common planning time for teachers and academic support block for students, and that we explore ways to improve the building temperature fluctuations that we are all very familiar with. I do anticipate the full report is likely to come with us, to us rather, in the next 60 days or so, and then I will share that with our staff and our community. But overall, they had a wonderful visit, and they enjoyed our school. We had a nearby principal from a neighboring town who was part of the visit, which isn't usual. Typically, it's from different areas of the state. I think he was jealous of a lot of things that he saw, so that was nice for us to be able to see. I do have a lot of folks that I'd like to thank for this effort. You know, this is, every 10 years, this takes place. It's really a three-to-four-year process leading up to the visit. So all of us are, we're just going to go home and sleep this weekend, but I'd like to thank members of my steering committee, my assistant principals, Catherine Pratt and Steve Black, my ELA director, Nicola Fannasiv, culinary teacher, Jill Bernardo, and Rollin. enrolled language teachers Jess Drew and Kristen Schulte, who is here tonight. Uh, we have several staff who volunteered to help with our presentations, Carrie Mathias, Sarah Stefania, Colin Gregory, who I think is also here. Um, Matt Durkey, Mike Lawless, Kelly DePasqua, Kevin Sawyer, Melissa Fontaine and Dan Correa. Many of our teachers helped to provide student work samples for the team. As evidence, Kim Orca, Alyssa Dennis, Heather Bates, Megan Rabinevich, Steph Ritchie, Jessica Hill-McStowe, Hannah Close, Rachel McGuire, Beth Fridette, Rush Chu, Tina Stasiak, Bob Svoj, Michelle McMillan and Vivi Pierce. Many thanks to our culinary students and our cafeteria staff for providing the team with breakfast and lunch. Our PTO for providing the team with a complimentary dinner at Latu Cheese and Red Robin. Paula, Emily and Gordon, who are our school committee representatives, meeting with the team. Um, parents Scott Milvert, Beth Hoffman, Amy Woods and Megan Cannon, who met with the team. Um, and my secretary Carrie Slow, who took care of every little detail, small and big, um, to help with their visit. Everything from booking their hotel reservation and making sure everything was squared away for them and making photocopies and keeping me in, in a zen mode. So. Uh, it very much was a school-wide team effort. Um, they met with the faculty yesterday. They did a debrief with the admin team. They met with the faculty to sort of share their initial insight. Um, there were no surprises. Everything that they found was in alignment with what we reported as part of our school summary. Um, so we look forward to reading the, the full report. Hopefully we can just work on our areas of improvement that we also identify over the next couple of years, um, before we start the process over again. Um, I do have a few donation requests to make tonight. I'll start off with some of the smaller ones. Um, I'd like to request permission to accept the donation of materials to be utilized as teaching supplies in our automotive program. A 2001 Dodge Neon donated by Camille Conick from Pembroke, Massachusetts. And 400 pounds of welding rod, um, that retails between $150 and $200 per 50 pounds to be utilized as a teaching supply in our metal fab program. Um, and it would be donated by Feeny Brothers out of Dorchester.
Awesome. I'll make a motion to accept the donations as presented by Miss Gill.
Second.
In depth was.
Second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. I saw you somewhere. Thank you. Should we send a letter of thank you as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then I have a third donation, uh, two parents who are here this evening, uh, Ms. Trish Doyle, Ms. Christine Dean, um, who were joined by Jeanne Dilly, Denise Murch, Lori Barkowski and Julie Lennox. Um, a group of parents who, um, raised $19,000, $19,109.18 to be exact, to be deposited into our student activities account to be used for the class of 2022's senior prom. Um, there are some corporate, uh, local businesses that helped with their fundraising efforts. Stay Tidy Brewery 44, Doyle Wood Flooring, Sarcastic Swine, Advocate Realty, Sullivan Driving School, Fabrizio Construction, Complete K9, Rogers and Gray, Remax, Cape and Island Glass, South Shore Cabinet, Skin and Steam Med Spa, Rayville Literacy and Learning Studio, Horizon Consulting, Ryan Orthodontics, Massey Group, Hilltop Club, Beyond Beauty, Head Over Heels Gymnastics, Grady Consulting, The Clean Team, and Veteran Landscaping. This is an unprecedented, um, amount of money raised outside of our school to be, that goes directly to benefiting our senior class. So. I, I'd actually like to ask.
Nice job.
Wonderful. And of course we will send a lot of thank you cards.
I thought you were done. Solomon, my motion to include.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Everything.
Seconded. Seconded.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you both very much. All right. Some school updates. Um, since we last met, um, Spirit Week and Homecoming were very successful. It's fun to kind of be back to some normalcy, right Connor? More normal than we've been in a while anyway. Um, Student Council was awarded September's Laker to the Core Award. Um, our executive board for their efforts to make homecoming more inclusive. Working with their peer stakeholder groups, they abandoned the outdated tradition of nominating just one male and one female as homecoming king queen. And instead gave the students the opportunity to nominate any two seniors as majesties of the lake. So previously same cycle, same, same-sex couples, excuse me, and non-binary students were excluded from this high school ritual. So kudos to the entire E-Board, President Riley Doyle, his mom is just here. Vice President Kira Sims, Secretary Abby Powers, Publicity Coordinator Ariane Whitmore, Committee Coordinator Anna Billings, and our sophomore, junior, senior delegates Erin Flaherty, Sophia Cox, Connaught McKinnon, and our Parliamentarian William Stemp. So that was a very wonderful change that they instituted for our school. We had our nurse pinning ceremony at the end of September. Um, many of our students in our allied health program, this is our first year of completing all four years. Last year's seniors were the first seniors, but they only had access to three years of the program. Um, and the following students burned their CNA, Angela Boyer, Lilian Bouchain, Avery Curran, Grace Driscoll, Brianna Duggan, Evelyn Moore, Kylie O'Brien, Sydney O'Brien, Callie Scanlon, Gabrielle Vickers and Annabelle Wright. We recently welcomed two new members to our school council, uh, which is our parent advisory board that meets with staff and students. Our next meeting will be November 4th at 7:00 PM in the high school library. We had our annual cultural awareness day today. Ms. Dillon, um, sociology class students were treated to sort of a trip around the world. Uh, for an in-school field trip where they were able to learn about different cultures from staff and students who lived or traveled abroad or in other parts of the country. Our SAD students this month raised over $400 for St. Jude's Children's Hospital as part of their annual Gold, Gold Day. Our SJC and Best Buddies Club rolled out the kindness cone campaign, um, which allows anybody in the cafeteria can grab like a little mini tracket cones, put on their table at lunch, which signals to their peers that this is a safe place. Come join us if you have no one else to eat with and, and hang out with. And they are used every single day. It's, it's pretty amazing to see in action. Earlier this week, we all wore our orange in honor of Unity Day to support, um, bullying prevention. And between now and our next school committee meeting, I wanted to share some upcoming events. On October 30th, we have our, our Hope Walk for Breast Cancer Awareness sponsored by our Key Club that kicks off at 8:30 at the track. It's open to all members of our communities, staff, students, families. Money raised will go to the Dana Farber Cancer Research Institute. Thanksgiving football is back this year. We take on the Titans at home on Thanksgiving Day. And the drama club production of Footloose takes place December 2nd, 4th and 5th. I will have to dip out of the school committee early that day because I am starring as Principal Clark. So I encourage you all to attend and support our students. And that's all. Any questions?
First of all, crazy. Like you guys are doing just some wonderful work. So thank you to, extend our thank you to all your staff and your students leaders because some of the things you're saying are just long overdue and wonderful changes and I, I really appreciate it. So. Um, I was wondering, uh, Madam Chair, if I might just ask, at least maybe at the next meeting or maybe the meeting after that, if we can maybe get a little bit of an update. I'm curious as to some of the things, and this goes to you, uh, Principal De Peel as well. But I'm, so I won't say it again when it comes up to your report. I'm curious about some of the things that you experienced during COVID that resulted in some changes that you then kept. For instance, like what educational model changes or what, and I don't mean curriculum per se, but I just sort of like, how do we change things at the school to deal with some of the things that were thrown at us? But what did we find that were refreshing or new or different ways of doing things? So I'm wondering if maybe we could at some future date get that kind of perspective.
Why don't you bring that up?
Oh, good. Glad you say that.
So, uh, we had done this activity at the, in the spring of, of last year. We did a protocol of stop, start, continue.
Continue.
With our administrative team. But, uh, we had discussed, um, bringing up in the school committee meeting. So at our last administrative meeting, I spoke with both Jim and Michaela regarding some of the practices, the positive practices that we've been able to continue on, um, uh, as a result of our, our experiences last year. So, uh, meetings in particular, um, having the ability to have remote meetings when preferable. So for example, giving parent conferences the choice of in-person or remote has helped to increase parent participation in parent conferences. Uh, we have IEP meetings that are sometimes remote. Again, allowing parents to participate, um, and not necessarily lose as much time at work. We don't have to travel. Uh, we, we ourselves have, have benefited from sub communities that can meet more regularly or, um, more easily because we can, we can have a, um, a virtual meeting instead of an in-person meeting. In terms of resources to enhance learning, uh, some of the, um, the top resources that were, were mentioned in our meeting was the use of Paradex, which is a platform for user participation and interacting with who's engaging with online schooling. Particularly at the middle school was emphasized. Parents wear forms, uh, for things like conferences and handbook sign-off has been a wonderful addition and helps us to collect that information more quickly and easily. Google Classroom is more, is used by more classes and more students than ever before. Um, and we, our devices are now one-to-one, not only at the high school, but at the middle school as well. Some other noticeable differences that we think have enhanced learning is the use of outdoor space. Whether it was out of COVID, the ability to go outside and learn outside is something that is well received. Mask breaks continue, uh, the use of air purifiers continue and everyone benefited from the amount of impact improvements across our, across our county schools, not only in the facility campus. So those are some of the, the top items that the team identified as practices that have changed and improved.
All right. That, that's a really way more of a specific answer than I was envisioning tonight. So thank you very much. I swear I didn't put you up to that. I'm also curious about the, um, the scheduling. So for instance, we went to sort of a block schedule last year because we were forced to and I thought that was, might be a great idea for the future. So are there any changes like that that are also?
Yeah. And so, and especially for our newer school committee members, if you recall, prior to the world shutting down, we had, um, started the process of reviewing our bell schedule again in response to our VAS collaborative conference visits that were placed in the fall of 2018. And so, uh, we had a working group, um, made up of staff, students, um, and, you know, department leadership that proposed a schedule to the staff, um, with the hopes that we could sort of enter into conversations about whether or not that proposal would work. And then about three weeks after that proposal, we, we shut down. So we, we absolutely put that on the back burner last year. Um, but as you know, we had to develop two different types of bell schedules last year. The hyper schedule and then our full in-person return, which was a four by four. And I think, I mean, you guys can attest, I think experiencing two different types of schedules or three different types of schedules, I should say, in such a short amount of time, um, really got the wheel spinning a little bit more. And I think was helpful to those who hadn't previously taught in a block schedule or who were maybe a little less open to change. Uh, I, I think it's gotten us in a different headspace with wrapping our heads around what a, a, a change could do for us with our bell schedule. Um, I think that the collaborative planning time that we had, the common planning time was so critical last year that having that time every Wednesday, adding in that support block, you know, when we did our full person return was helpful for, for many of our students. And so those are elements that as this committee has reconvened this year, we actually just had our second meeting today. Those are pieces that we, we want to try to roll out moving forward. And so, um, again, back at the table, we have department leaders, admin, teachers, SOA leadership representative. And our hope is to create the perfect schedule, um, that encompasses all of those items, but also doesn't, you know, hinder our CTE experience and the course offerings that we have. So I'm hopeful we'll, the creative juices are flowing. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll have a schedule soon that we're all proud of and, and hope that we will be able to implement in the near future.
So I just want to thank you and your staff again for that because it, I think there, it'd be so easy just to go back to what we did. Right? I mean, everybody was tired last year, exhausted. I mean, gosh, no, we all did, was just like a miracle. And, you know, it'd just be easier to be like, we're going back to the seven periods, blah, blah, blah. And so that the thing like we can do something different, we can learn from that is just so encouraging to me as a school committee member and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll be sure to share that with my staff.
Yep.
And just to bounce off of what Leslie Ann was saying, you know, I want to say that Jill's going to start budget season with us tonight, but budget season never ends. We all know that's a reality. So when it comes time for you to present some of your asks this year for the budget, and I know this might be a multi-year process, can you make sure to highlight the asks that directly relate to that student support time and the common planning time? Just so we know what your aim is with those asks.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Was that your last question?
That, that was it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Jen, please.
Thank you. Um, so first thing is school updates. So I just want to say that the haunted hallways are back.
Yes.
It will be happening tomorrow night after a long fanfare of where did it go? It's back tomorrow night. Um, so just to quickly just mention about that. So in past years, we have over 400 students. This is our most well-attended evening. Over 8% of our entire school comes out. It's really an awesome experience to see our students all want to come together and even like this and kind of share that socially with one another. And, um, we also have students that have been in the haunted halls that are now at the high school, which I always ask permission from Michaela if we can reach out to them. And we had over 130 students volunteer to want to come back and help us out this year.
Are you better this event? You should go.
You know, Michaela's support is wonderful.
Get taken in.
Such a great event. Really brings us back together. We're one family. We're one Silver Lake. And, um, we have over 30 staff members that will be here, uh, tomorrow night to help and support. And we have parents that come and help and support. And I want to thank all of those. I want to thank our high school volunteers. And, uh, we're really looking forward to a little bit of back to normalcy tomorrow night. Um, and, uh, I'll just make one mention of our previous event, which is the Welcome Back Cookout. And I always go around the first day of school to see all the kids and say, hey, we've got a great year planned for you guys this year. I can't wait for you to see what we're going to do. And then when we're doing the Welcome Back Cookout, I had a student come up to me and say, you did a lot of this, De Peel. This is great. You know, and they're so excited just to have something to be social and be back and have some normalcy back. So, um, so we're looking forward to that tomorrow night. We have the fire department coming tomorrow. They do their annual inspection before we have haunted us to make sure everything's safe and to get everything approved. So it's kind of a, a big process, but it's really well worth it to see the smiling faces and the kids all excited, uh, to see us at the, at the night. Another thing I'll make mention of is the Turkey Bowl. So that's going to be November 24th. That's when our students play our faculty in our annual football game. Now, we didn't really have that last year, but now it's back. Uh, so we'll be doing that. That will be the Turkey Bowl. And, um, we also have the, towards the week after Christmas coming on December 11th to 12th. That is our drama production that will happen here in the auditorium. Uh, it's the week after Christmas and everyone in Santa's workshop is exhausted. Overworked and underappreciated, the elves decide to go on a vacation far away. However, when they arrive, they see Santa and the reindeer vacation there too. And they say, that's where the fun begins. So that would be our production towards the night before Christmas. Um, I also need to talk about the hockey waiver. So Martha James had talked to me about, um, uh, looking for a hockey waiver for the eighth grade. Uh, talking about the cooperative team of the girls' ice hockey with Whitman Hansen, since the school has enough students to field a team. We have ample enrollment over the past seven years and it's been very successful. Unfortunately, this year we anticipate having a total of 10 players from Silver Lake and only two from Whitman Hansen. Uh, we've submitted to MIAA and have our approval for a waiver to accept eighth grade students from the middle school. Um, and, uh, with that, they would then be able to enroll in a tryout for the girls' hockey team. But I was looking for your approval of that.
Do you have any idea of why the, the difference?
So I talked to Martha today about that and I asked, I said, oh, so that's, you know, a little unusual. Why is the enrollment down? And she said that she, she thought it was more so with Whitman Hansen down two students more so than Silver Lake. And that's why we've had that partnership. Um, but she thought that, um, that they'd be able to field a team if they could include their eighth grade students. And, uh, except it's great. Anytime our students have another opportunity to participate in an athletic endeavor, I'm all for it. Um, any endeavor really, you know, to get them to engage and connect. So I told them that, I told Martha I would certainly come and talk to you guys and all that.
Okay. I apologize, Leslie Ann. I'm sorry you're here for a break as I just had to talk to someone. I apologize.
I was just going to make a motion to approve that. Um, I grew, uh, grew up in a high school that was grade seven through 12 and seventh and eighth graders played and tried out for JV. Um, so I, I lived it. I'm fine with it. We didn't have girls' hockey back then unfortunately. Um, but there were other sports that you could try out for. So I would motion to approve that waiver.
I'll second if I also have a comment. So my comment is just, um, actually I was involved. I was, my daughter was on the first team. So I was involved eight years ago when we put that together. But I, I think I can address the Whitman Hansen problem. What, what's happening is with a lot of girls, boys can play hockey in high school, but then they go to prep school juniors before college. Girls need to be seen in high school to get a college scholarship. So what happens is they'll go to the private schools so that they, and that's exactly what's happening. You have stellar girls, but they're going to the private schools. They have a ton of hockey players in Whitman Hansen. And I also just want to say it's super common to have eighth graders play girls' hockey because obviously girls mature. because obviously, girls mature a lot quicker, and there's eighth grade girls who blow away 12th grade girls. You know, it's not like boys, it's not like putting a bunch of eighth grade boys with senior boys. That's insanity. But with girls, it's completely common, and they did that quite a bit way back when we started. And I think we even were looking at potentially trying to get eighth graders back then because there were some really good girls, but for whatever reason, we didn't do that because we had enough.
I think our numbers, right, were too good.
Right, yeah. So I'm for it, definitely.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Our honor roll celebration will happen on November 23rd, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving break. We also have an out of state field trip that will need your approval, and that's our course is invite the same God Bless America at the Providence Bruins hockey game on Friday, January 7th. It's an exciting opportunity for our student singers to be to perform at a professional sporting event in front of thousands of people. It's a wonderful opportunity for our families to cheer our singers on at center ice before the game. So I would just ask for your permission to approve the out of state field trip.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we had SOLs this week. On Monday, October 8th, our guidance staff presented the signs of suicide program to all our seventh grade students. The program teaches our students more about mental health and how to seek help if they worry about themselves or a friend. Students learn about depression in this curriculum and when encouraged to seek help if they notice any of the warning signs that were reviewed during the presentation. They learn how to identify depression or potential suicide risk in themselves or a friend, and how to act and how to support. I want to thank our guidance department, who do a wonderful job. They do that annually and it's helped to support our students and their mental health. We have parent teacher conferences coming up, and that's on November 17th and 18th, 17th in the afternoon, 1:55 to 2:50, and the 18th is in the afternoon, 1:55 to 2:20, and at night, 5 to 7. And as Dr. Taylor talked about earlier, one of the things that we are taking with us is the opportunity for a parent to be virtually with our parents or come in person. That's one of the positive things that we have brought forward. And that's it for me.
And before we hand it off to Christine, okay, I'm going to ask her, I apologize. I neglected to allow you to introduce our student representatives. That was my fault.
No, that's all right. Perfect. So she's going to chime in anyway. So I'd like to introduce Connor Doyle. As you recall from our previous meeting, our student council electives on the student, excuse me, on the school committee board are going to be cycling through this year, so Connor's joining us tonight. I believe you've prepared a small statement to share, just a state of the school address, if you will.
Yes. Great. Hello, school committee members. I'm Connor, head of the skill set. This past month has been a very eventful one for the students of the high school. Upon our return to school in September, we held a spirit week, the week of the 20th to the 25th. It included fun dress up days such as USA Day and Barbecue Dad and Soccer Mom Day. During the five-day competition, the average rate of student participation was an astounding 70%. To put that number in perspective, that's the highest average participation we've had at the high school for a spirit week in over eight years. And congratulations to the senior class for winning the spirit week competition. They will celebrate their victory with a Kona Ice Truck Celebration in the spring. And our second big event in the month of September was our annual tailgate competition. Due to weather, this year's tailgate was held indoors, with each class getting their own section of the building, such as the event entrance, library, lobby, and the main lobby. Over 200 students attended the event, playing games, eating food, and most of all, having a lot of fun. Each class also had a unique theme to their tailgate, which carried out their area. The freshmen had a Willy Wonka Charlie and the Chocolate Factory theme. The sophomores had a Hall of Fame theme. The juniors had a Western theme in full catering barbecue. And seniors had a flashback to the 2000s theme. And congratulations to the freshman class for winning the tailgate competition this year. Coming up this month, at the end of the month, will be our breast cancer awareness month, which is for our month of October. Many clubs around the school are sponsoring different breast cancer awareness events and activities throughout the month for students, such as the opportunity to write names of loved ones, family members, anyone they know who has gone or is currently going through breast cancer, ribbons, which are then going behind around the school, as well as holding an open student art competition for different breast cancer awareness button designs, which students will then have an opportunity to get later this month. The key club will be sponsoring a breast cancer awareness walk on Saturday 30th. All proceeds from the walk are going towards Dana Farber Cancer Institute, which is a great opportunity for students to come on a Saturday and support a really good cause. Student council will be sponsoring the concession stand at the walk, and that will be where I hope our two month. And if you have any questions, I'd like to thank you all for listening to the student update. Thank you.
Great job, Connor.
Thank you.
Yes, that was true. Very good update, you looked at exceptionally well.
Thank you.
Connor left out the fact that the juniors also brought in chickens as part of their Western theme.
Yes, yes.
Black chickens. Great job, Connor.
Thank you.
It is really exciting to hear, though, that the numbers were so high in participation. I think after a year and a half of not having that kind of engagement in learning and school community and culture, it's incredible, not just to say that we're back to where we were, but we're exceeding, you know, ever before. That's really amazing, so.
I think that's a direct result of the student leadership that we have.
That's awesome.
They're incredible, great kids.
Thank you. Christina?
Thank you. Now that we're in person, back in your package, should we do a section on the financials for this evening? And just keep in mind that this is a work in progress, and it just, it's reflective of this moment in time. Based on the information that we know of right now, we try to uncover and take care of as much as we can possibly be aware of. Look at what's happened the prior years, look at what's coming up. Since we last saw it, there really haven't been many changes. The one item I do want to bring to your attention now at the end of the report is we have a $4,000 deficit in special education transportation. We're really struggling in that area of getting vendors, a lot of the vendors have left, the industry left business. So we have to get what we can get. We can't be as selective as we can start. So we are struggling there. Between the two accounts, we have a deficit of $4,000. One of the only other things I didn't mention last month that will continue is we have a deficit in this report for our gas account at the high school. And that's just, we're looking at the worst case scenario based on what happened last year. And once we see how this year's does turn out, we will make adjustments to reflect what we expect that will be at the end of the year. But right now, we haven't really used all that gas, and we really can't. We're just looking at where we were last year at this point in time, so we're just maintaining that financial foot. I think that was it. There really weren't many changes. We're doing okay. I did bring a few handful of warrants for tonight. We did have single signature warrants signed last week, but we had a handful of things that have popped up. This year is still unusual, so we had a handful of things that have popped up, but that I just thought this would be a good opportunity to take care of this. Unless there are any questions, that's it for right now.
I do have one question. Because we're still pretty early in this school year, so I'm curious, you probably have no idea, the projection of how much of a deficit this special transportation line is.
We have encumbered what we believe we need to get through to get through to the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
So we're not expecting that to grow significantly.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was like as of the state.
No, this is who we are. We encumber for the full year. If we have a, we know the students, we know what the routes are costing us, so we do accrue for the whole year at this point in time when we can. And that has, we have accounted for all the students that we're aware at the current transportation rates.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And now, I'll show you this next one, because many lines work on a month-by-month basis.
It depends. For instance, like utilities, transportation, a lot of those costs, we can predetermine based on our contract, what we know, the number of students, what's going to happen. There are other things, we don't encumber for supplies for the whole entire year. We do that as we need to do that. You'll see our insurance accounts, we've taken care of the ones that we're already aware of. We have an idea, we believe our health insurance will be for the end of the year. But there are also other accounts that it's like maintenance of the building, as the world turns is how we manage that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Assistant Superintendent Ryan, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I was just going to share some slides to be able to present, so I'm just going to have a little projector here, if that's okay. You have the slide, you have the slides in your packet, but.
Would you like to advance the side story while you present? That would help.
No, I think it's okay. I think it's okay. Thank you. Just going to use that.
I have a question, so I can tell some time while you're.
That would be great.
Okay, fantastic. So you know, I just, it's always so awkward, yes, when you're teaching and then there's like eight students telling you what button to push.
The likelihood of a technology failure comes up.
Yes. No, I just had a question, and it was a little bit, Jim's not in the room right now, but I know there were some, some things that happened at the middle school that required communication to parents, and I just didn't know when school committees informed about ongoings at like various schools that involve issues of bullying or police presence or things like that, and if that's something that we can be included on those emails that go out to parents when that happens? I don't know if it's directed, because this incident happened to be in a.
My understanding is that it went out to the community, the Silver Lake Regional Middle School community. If you weren't on, on that communication, it may be just a matter of making sure that he, he adds community when he does it to the Silver Lake Regional Middle School plus community. That may be the issue.
Okay.
I will, I will look into that, because it was my understanding that it went actually the entire.
Do you, do you get my weekly updates?
Nope.
Nope.
So you should all, so I select communities, so high school and community, so it may just be making sure your email addresses are part of that group, because I add the community every, every week.
All I get is when Karen sends an agenda. I get no other communications from either building.
Okay, so we can, we can have a space with Mr. Murphy tomorrow to make sure their emails.
I got that in my parent email, I didn't get it from.
Yeah.
So you should see it twice for.
Right.
Paula, this is, this is something that we've always tried to address to school committee members for 10-plus years, and sometimes we get in, sometimes we don't. Is there anything that would preclude us from being part of the parent messages as school committee members? So just in the happenstance community doesn't get clicked, we're still made aware of what is being sent out to the community and the parents?
My understanding is that you could be added to parents and you could be added to community. It may be that community wasn't clicked, or maybe that certain people have not been updated to be on the community link.
I would say it's the second, because I'm very good about clicking community. And I know Jim is too.
And that was what I kind of thought might have happened, but I was like, I don't know, but just because I was new and I just wasn't getting them, but I just, when somebody from the outside raises it to me and I have no idea what they're talking about, I feel very uncomfortable, because I'm like, well, I feel like I should know this as a school committee member, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I can connect with Mr. Murphy in the morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, got it. That's an easy thing, so I'll take care of it.
But that's all these kinds of communications, so I feel like it should be.
Not just Silver Lake, they should all be included in that community now.
Yes, please.
But Kingston School Committee for Kingston Community, Silver Lake for Silver Lake Community, right, yeah.
And I just ask that, you know, Karen has the most recent emails for us, so if she could use that, you could use that list, that would be great.
And instead of your Silver Lake emails?
You cringe this year in the professional level, correct? Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, we forward that to you. Thanks.
I didn't, I didn't check it like today, because now it just dawned on me was we were talking about this, that somebody had mentioned that I'm listed as a Kingston School Committee member, not that I care.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
But I just wanted to make note of that. And if you're going to reach out to the technology director or whomever about this issue at this level, can we do it for the Ellen Harris too, while you're on?
I actually, I actually noticed that today. I made a fridge screen, and I gave it to Karen, and she updated already. And I said, if I want to check that one, I'm going to check all four. So I went to all four, and there was one other error that I found, so Karen has taken care of all of those today.
Awesome. Thank you. I just, I didn't even notice myself. It's somebody pointing.
You missed all of our fun emails.
I appreciate it. Just what we want, more square emails.
So I just wanted to review quickly the MCAS data for, that you received in your packets for the seven, seven through 12 region. This is just a little bit of flashback about what was different in 2021, and that's that students in 338 were randomly assigned one session of a regular two-test session, so some of the individual results in 2021 may have been slightly different for students. We allowed students to take the test remotely for the first time ever for MCAS, and the student growth percentages had to be recalculated this year because of what the state referred to as the academic headwind, but what we all would refer to probably as the effect of pandemic. So those are some things that were a little bit different about, about this year. The good news is that participation was still pretty strong, and that's revealed in the Silver Lake numbers as well. You'll see the percentages of like 96, 97% of our students were able to, to sit for the, sit for the MCAS. That was consistent statewide with, with those same numbers. This, this slide I think is helpful to look at, just because the meeting and exceeding numbers in mathematics and in ELA were down in 2021, which means that the total percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding the expectations were smaller than they were in years past, which I don't think is that surprising, given the challenges faced by families, students, staff, the number of in-person hours and remote challenges. So this bar represents the 2019 percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. So you can see here in 2021 that we, the students weren't, weren't as close, except in grade 10, where 3% more students were meeting or exceeding. So there are a few bright spots, you know, in some of this data.
Do we have any explanation for that?
Yeah. I don't. I, I'm not sure, but are, I'm not, I'm not sure.
A good freshman teaching team, maybe?
Well, at this point, this is for the entire state, so I think it's, I'm not sure. I haven't, I don't know.
This is not so.
No, this is great. We're just trying to go.
Right now, this is, this is statewide, just to give some context to the numbers for the, for the region.
This, this is, it's a computer adaptive test? Is that accurate or no?
I do not, I do not believe that it is.
It's not adaptive?
No.
And was it shorter this?
It was.
It was shorter this year?
That's correct.
So when they're leveling this, do they have a variation calculation to like, if you're going to have a shorter standardized test, you're going to have higher variability?
Right, so what, what happened, I can just answer your question. One area that they accounted for this, I don't know if it was super helpful for families, was that on the parent report, or maybe more clear in your slide, they admitted that individual, there could be more variability in the initial score, so they added a white ellipse to say, this 510 may not be 100% accurate for your child, but it could be more of a range, but this, as Rob Tarden explained it from, from DESI, they believe that in whole, the numbers were probably in aggregate, pretty strong, even though students took a test at half as much. Inside the packet, you can see more of that information, but I think this, in terms of Inside the packet, you can see more of that information, but I think this in terms of sort of the decline, but based statewide, the meeting or seeing trend was, was down more significantly in math than, than in ELA. Here's the results for the, just in aggregate for the Silver Lake English Language Arts in grades seven and eight. Performance for students tracked very, very close to the state with the meeting and exceeding percent similar to what was seen across the state. In math, the results were stronger in terms of the number of students that were able to meet expectations in grade seven and eight. For the eighth grade, science, technology and engineering, students outperformed those state percentages a little bit. And you can see that about 44% of students were meeting or exceeding expectations in the district. And then a large percentage of the students were not, were partially meeting expectations. And this was on the new next gen assessment for, for STE in grade eight. Now we move to grade 10 for, for ELA. 73% of students were meeting or exceeding expectations there. And again, when you look at the participation here, that's very strong and a little bit higher than the state percentage. And then for mathematics, again, our students are outperforming the state and our participation is, is very, is very good. For physics in grade nine, this was the last year of the legacy assessment, which means that next year there'll be the next generation assessment for, for physics. Our students take physics first. So this is, uh, this is the assessment that we use in Silver Lake. Students can take biology and other sciences if they were not able to, uh, if it was a better fit for them. But our results, um, you can see it from 2018, 2019, 2021, obviously in 2020, that the MCAS was canceled. That's why it's not on there. One thing that I added to this presentation was just a reminder about the graduation requirements for the class of 2022, that the state modified the competency, competency determination so that students had two opportunities to meet the graduation requirement. There are interim standards in each of the content areas. So there's a certain score in ELA and a certain score in math, which align with the legacy MCAS, which sort of drew the line for the score you had to, to meet to, to be determined as able to pass it. But now there's also the option for successful completion of a relevant high school course. If you're a senior who couldn't take the MCAS and pass it because of the effects of the pandemic. The same is, uh, is, is true for the science as well. Like there's a, if they took the test before February 2020, that could have counted towards the competency determination. If not, there was a relevant high school course in science, would mean the graduation requirement. So effectively students are, they're trying not, we're trying not to analyze any students with the effects of the pandemic and missing an opportunity to take the graduation required MCAS. This slide just addresses what we do with that information. So we, our coordinators have an opportunity to work together with their departments and their teams at the middle school and student support teams to analyze the individual student data. I personally think that's probably the biggest benefit of students having taken the MCAS. Just so that parents, students and teachers can get some individualized information about how kids are doing. It's not the whole picture, but it's a picture. And since students have to take it, we really should look at it and see what we can learn about student strengths and needs. We can recommend intervention based on that and, and try to look at research-based practices that would help students.
So can, can we talk a little bit more about that? We're 20% through the school year basically, right? So do we have any specifics on these? I mean, obviously they're, you know, kind of school wide gaps and things like that. So do we have particulars on things that we're actively doing right now aside from, well, the teachers have the data for their individual students that they're working with their students?
Well, in addition to the interventions that could be applied because of this data, we also have data that our schools use with standardized measures. But in addition, both the schools have student support teams where plans can be made for individual students who may be struggling with particular concepts or issues, whether they be academic or social portion. So there are a number of things in place. And in addition, we've, we had a number of summer programs to try to address some of the issues that we anticipated students would have. The brief emphasis is trying to focus on grade level expectations and then meeting students who are to a level of interventions. I don't know if that completely answered your question, but we also have some other, for example, sharing with each other with our strategy.
I think to, if I may, to piggyback on that, the high school, you know, as Jill mentioned, the SST, we restructured that this year, the student support team. And so it's really intervention focused for students. Professional development continues to be offered. And so both the MSAA and DESI have several offerings that identify, you know, gaps in curriculum and specifically target these areas because it's, it's the whole state, it's the whole country right now. So we have several teachers who have already taken advantage of those offerings. And they are able then to come back and share sort of a train the trainer model, share the knowledge they receive at the PD offering within their department or with their team. You know, we've made some changes in terms of least restrictive environment for students. So you know, aligning our core values with our belief that all students can be successful in the least restrictive environment. And we've also, the, the work we've done towards our bell schedule review, the, the end goal, right? Is that we're building in that structured support time for students throughout the school year in a, in a fixed model, not just kind of dipsticking with kids here and there who need it. So long-term, that's another way that we're approaching this.
I, I just wanted to remind Jill and Ryan that we did have a conversation over the summer because the superintendent's association and the school committee association pushed DESI to release the data from MCAS testing last spring to us as early as possible. And Commissioner Riley was true to his word and they sent us what's known as embargoed data. And embargoed data can't be released to the general public and that includes us in our capacity as school committee members. So I believe that was at a meeting back in late July that you already had the data on hand and were going through some of that information at a very high level. So I just remember us having that conversation coming in, but I don't want to think this is the first time we've seen this.
We have Dropbox level data early on, which is more student specific and then we get the, the broader trends closer to school.
What do we have on grades 11 and 12, since they're not MCAS?
Grades 11 and 12?
Yeah.
So we have, we have data in our, in our courses and in our departments that we use to assess on a regular basis, whether it be formal assessments or informal assessments. And again, we have our, our student support team that, that is also a venue for students who may be struggling. We have the district personal accommodation plan, which is something that you can create for students that you, you want to try certain strategies to see if they'll work or find out a set of strategies so that you can observe them for several weeks, see if it works or see if you need to adjust the plan or see if there may be more, more support needed for that particular child. So that's, that's another way that we go about trying to.
Do we have a benchmark, say against any of our past data or anything like that? Like, do we know how to be able to do gap analysis, so to speak, from year to year?
So typically, yes, this is, that's part of what MCAS.
Yeah, but that's MCAS. I'm speaking for 11 and 12.
For 11th and 12th grade, um, and.
Yeah, it's, it's all like internal data within our, you know, formal and informal assessments in the building. But we also, 12th, current 12th graders were given the opportunity to take, to sit for MCAS last spring and they have another opportunity next month to sit for it. So we would actually have some comparative data for them as well.
It's mostly those who have passed the previous ones. Okay. So I'm sorry. I mean, I could ask many questions all day about this.
I think Mr. Duvio wanted to share a little bit about how it's used for middle school, what he said.
Yeah, if I could. I just, you know, I know that, um, Kayla talked about supports to kind of close the gaps and some of the things that. So obviously the middle school in the seventh and eighth grade, we have common assessments that are used across all three teams per grade. And we have one per unit. So we usually evaluate through the common assessments how the students are doing. Also things that we're helping with gaps, we have created a math SSR support. We have SSR in our, in our school every single day. And the math teachers, um, some of our math teachers have volunteered to help support students during that SSR time to help with their gaps and understanding, to help them stay on track and fill those gaps. We also have academic support that's offered within the day. And then we also have some additional academic support that we offer after school. So from 2:20 to 3:30, again, to help students that might be struggling a little bit from some gaps that we incurred from last year, to kind of help fill those and get them supported through their classrooms. And then other supports that we have done this year is we have our Title I supports that we have embedded into the classroom. So a Title I teacher goes in and this is a push in the classroom. So they can help students in real time in the classroom as they're struggling. And then we also have a resource which is help students that are on IEDs, help with their goals and kind of again, fill those gaps. So we have multiple things that we try to be mindful of coming into this year to put in place for students that might need that, that are struggling, that we can then support them and support the parents to get them back up to speed.
So the standard testing, seventh and eighth grade, that, that's not MCAS, that's your own testing?
So we have MCAS testing obviously as well, but yes, we have internal tests that are common. So for instance, my 37th grade social studies teachers all have a common assessment that they'll be benchmarking their kids. And then they come together and they evaluate those scores across the entire grade. But just for examples, so yes.
Me? Are you good? Okay. So I mean, MCAS is an exceptionally complicated topic, right? I mean, not only just for our pandemic MCAS, but in general. I sat on Jim's school council for years and studied these data and sat next to Laura Tilton for several years arguing data points with her and stuff. I mean, it's super complicated, right? So one of the things that I note here, and this is just a total surface look at this, is, you know, at least in these data that we're seeing so far, in the seventh and eighth grade across the board, this is not true in the 10th grade, the numbers that are in here, but more than half of our students are below the line. More than half, right? I mean, that's huge. So then you cut, then you question like, well, why? It's not, can't necessarily just be the individual students, right? It has to be what we're, what we're teaching them or how, how we're teaching it to them, right? I'm like, this is just total ABC level here, right? This, this play. So when you have up here additional steps to support our students, I totally appreciate the goal that it is to support our students, but I think it's also supporting our staff because clearly they're not teaching them either in the fashion or the content or the approach that they need so that more than half of our students aren't below the line, right? So I think that one of the things we need to focus on early, I see, and I see you starting to get to it is what are we doing to support our teachers, right? Because it can't just be the students not achieving. It has to be the, the teachers at some level not being given the resources or being able to achieve to get them to this point. Now, whether you agree or disagree with MCAS, it's what we have, right? So I grew up in the world of SRAs. I was whatever the heck we had back in the day, right? Different, different approach, different reasons, but it just seems to me that like, I would love to see a bifurcated process. Like what are we doing to support our students and what are we doing to support our teachers? Because is, this is not because our students are stupid, right? This is because the way that we're teaching our students is not getting them above the line or they're not getting the resources. So I was just wondering, as you go along your presentation, can we talk about both paths? I mean, we have really, you know, highly achieving students and families in this district. And to see half of them, at least in the seventh and eighth grade, below the line. And frankly, seven, 70 and 90 students in the 10th grade still below the line is really troublesome. And I know we're above the state average in almost every case, but it's still, in my opinion, not acceptable. So just kind of wondering if you can maybe talk about the two paths and not just what we're doing for our students.
Sure. I think, I think we agree that our students are and staff are capable of more and better. And I, I think this, the presentation that follows this one is about all of the data that the superintendent and our administrative team collected and it sort of lays out a plan to, talks about a fully articulated curriculum. Principal Gill talked a little bit about time for staff to, to have collaborative time together. And this slide with, with common curriculum units and engaging performance-based tasks, I think that's part of the, the challenge too, is to make sure that our curriculum is providing those experiences for students. So I would, I'll do the best I can with the, you know, two-tier, two-track remaining slides. But I would also say that the, um, the strategy for district improvement, which Jill's going to share following this, I think really lays out that plan to support teachers and, and students in, in the time ahead to make sure that, um, people have the opportunity, that staff and students, to realize their, their full potential.
Well, I, I definitely appreciate that. And just going off of my manager on Gordon's comments is like, there's the short term. We're 20% of the school year. What are we doing? And then there's the long, medium to long-term play. And I think that that is also, you know, the two, the other bifurcation that we need to talk about as well. So, thank you.
Sure. And I just think one, this slide just has a little bit about one of this social emotional learning and making sure how our students are faring. This would be a piece of data, maybe to your point, Mr. Laws, about how are we taking in with students? Three through 12, all students would be engaged with, with a survey to think about what their needs are related to relationships with, with teachers, with high expectations, those kind of components to kind of get a sense of, an objective sense of how, how our students are faring. And Ashley's helped out with that. Jim and McGala as, as part of the new secondary SEL task force. There is additional, I think one of the needs that we're seeing to your point, Gordon is about extras that students may need. So I have talked with the math coordinator and they're finding use with, with Delta Math and IXL to get some of the additional practice with students. And I know that's more of a short-term intervention, but I think it addresses your point about like, what are we doing now? And, and Jim talked a little bit about targeted supports during sustained silent reading, the use of Title I and also STAR reading in grades seven and eight. The remainder of this that you have in your packet is just about how the parent report is organized. So that every, through parents, where every parent received their MCAS report for their child, which is watch you through what it will look like in case you didn't receive one for your, for your student.
Just one final question. So if we're doing subject area tests at grade seven and eighth, they're pretty standardized. Is there, could we not do something like that at grades 11 and 12? I, I mean, there's, there's again, no data here on where our 11 and 12, where our 11th and 12th graders are, except for, I would assume the grading system. And so it, it doesn't seem to me that there's, at, at least transparent to anybody here, there's not gap identification.
I would just say curriculum wise, that what the goal, standardization, I think is a good, uh, it's a good question about data, data that's statistically reliable and valid. What I've seen from the perspective of an articulated and aligned curriculum is if you have experiences for kids that are aligned with the frameworks, but also are common among like the ninth grade teachers, I feel like that's a good step forward in terms of, hey, let's all look at this narrative essay that students were working on. Where are the gaps that we're seeing and how can we, we can address them? And I think that's a start. I don't know if we could get to the point unless we developed or aligned with like a more of a commercial assessment. I think getting that level of standardization is, is a couple steps, but I think the first step would just be making it.
Well, I think it's important to note too, it's this year's seniors are maybe the ones we don't have the same data trends that we have for others. This year's juniors took the test last year as sophomore. So this is their data that we're seeing. So this year's seniors unfortunately are the ones that sort of fell into the pandemic hole that we have limited data for. But I, I can assure you that through other efforts, our relationship mapping, our grade progress reports, we are tracking their progress and making sure they're on track to be where they need to be at the end of the school year.
And I would just say also, I mean, just, I would be very hesitant to even move in that direction personally, as both a school committee member and an educator, because I think we are over scientificizing, scientificating. I'm just gonna make that word up. It's an art as well. And, and I think we have phenomenal educators that know our students well and they know what's best for an individual student. And adding more tests to which we are teaching towards a test as opposed to towards a student and their specific needs, I would be very, very resident to like implement or push to it. So.
Maybe it's less about testing and more about surfacing what are our actual gaps. And if we have ways of surfacing actual gaps through curriculum and things like that, I mean, it's, it feels useful to be able to look at this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just on terms of testing, Madam Chair.
Yes, sure.
You know, we get so caught up because of MCAS being high stakes, that sometimes assessments get wrapped into that high stakes atmosphere. And I understand what you're saying about qualitative data, but I think if we're thoughtful about it, we can find some quantitative measures that can help, you know, move the process forward.
I certainly, and I'm hopeful that some of the UBD work that's happening where we're aligning around some more project-based, authentic, transferable skills, that we may then be able to see some of that in a more qualitative manner as well.
So in your package, you'll find this presentation as well as a one-page summary of a more comprehensive strategy for district improvement. We have narrowed it down to a one-page summary to help drive tonight's discussion, but also to make it a usable document. You will recall that in the spring, I presented to you some energy margins that used multiple data points, including student, staff, and community surveys, interviews, documents, and archival types of examinations, as well as our own data, whether it be for student discipline, district curriculum, accommodation plans, things of that nature. So it was a multifaceted approach to looking at various aspects of our district at that time. And we took those findings and after sharing them with you, we began to work with our, our central office, our building leadership, and our department and creative coordinators over the summer months to take those findings to help develop a series of strategic objectives. So the first thing that we did was think about what our vision for our community is in terms of our, our educational drive and our, and what we hoped to achieve. And we wanted it to be simple, but powerful. And our vision was a community where everyone belongs, staff and students who cover each one another to grow, learn, achieve, and dream without limit. Emphasize without limit. So there are four main strategic objectives because we noticed, and we presented those findings to you last spring. We noticed that building relationships was critical in terms of building our sense of community. While we had a strong sense of community and there were reasons to celebrate community, there were also areas or even groups of students who were less connected to that sense of community or community members who had less information about our schools than we had imagined that they had. We want to emphasize high expectations for all students through research-based effective strategies, data-informed instruction, and tier systems of support. High expectations is something that you'll see reiterated in terms of making sure that students have access to the least restrictive environment. It means examining our belief systems about what students are able to do. It means examining our own belief systems about intelligence, that it is not something that is fixed, that smart is something you get. So with support and effective efforts, all students can learn, achieve, and grow. And it's our job to look at any structures that may create barriers to that achievement and to find ways to help all children and all students reach that full potential. One of the things that is no surprise to any of us is the need to create and implement an aligned and engaging curriculum, pre-K through 12. We do not have an articulated pre-K through 12 curriculum. We have programs, we have some development of some courses that have gotten more advanced than others, but overall, we still have work that needs to be done in order to make sure that we have a strong pre-K through 12 articulated curriculum that's guaranteed to all students, not just depending upon the, the teacher that you have. So there are certain expectations. And when we talk about that curriculum, we're not talking about teaching to the test. We're not talking about MCAS. We're talking about using the standards and teachers working together to decide what's most important for students to know and be able to do. There's no way they can cover it all, and even if they did, the ability to retain that, as most of you would probably agree, you might be able to remember it for the test, but then you lose it. The creation of these units mean that we need to have performance-based assessments that are relevant, engaging, allow for student voice, student choice, and allow students to go deep into subject matter. So it's actually a liberating process where teachers and administrators work together to decide what's most important for students to know and be able to do. It's aligned with standards that they will be tested on, but to just cover the material is not an effective strategy for most students. And finally, we also recognize that this may mean focusing on structures and processes that will make us, help us better support the learning process in our schools. So whether that mean looking at how our school structures its time and to what extent we can provide support for students during the day and collaboration for teachers to create this aligned curriculum, or whether it means making sure that we're using our, our grant monies as effectively as possible and aligning those expenditures with these goals and making sure what we spend our money on is actually clearly connected to these goals. Our goals should drive and be connected to that process. And finally, communicating with the community in terms of what those potential needs and goals are so that they also have an understanding of what's important to us and why.
So what's the, what's the timeframe on an aligned curriculum?
So an aligned curriculum would take at least five years in many cases. We have pockets that are further ahead than others, but the curriculum should actually never be done. It's something that we should continually revise and revisit, but to say we have an articulated and aligned curriculum, we're looking at probably a five-year plan.
Okay.
And we started this prior to the pandemic by beginning this training and we continued during the pandemic. But again, to say that our, our areas of focus were divided and we had to switch gears and begin focusing more on how to teach and learn in this hybrid and remote environment would be a more accurate description of how the majority of our, our professional development and our time was spent, like was adjusted. So this is a one-page document that tries to talk about the different initiatives, the steps that we will take over the next five years to meet these goals. But we wanted to give you a sense of what our, our steps are this year, of what we'll be focusing on. So with regards to objective number one, we are going to expand our social emotional learning task force to include pre-K through 12. We had started it in the elementary school and we're now expanding it to the secondary level. We are going to continue building upon improving relationship skills and identifying resources to foster positive relationship building. We're going to develop a pre-K through 12 survey for students, staff, and families to help determine areas of need. We recognize that as part of this transition back to school, not all students are experiencing the transition back to full in-person learning the same way, and there are, there are needs. Some of our, our students need additional support. We're going to expand our second step, which is an anti-bullying and social emotional curriculum to the middle school level and begin considering resources and additional supports at the high school level as well. We're going to promote district-led, common, and social emotional language and practices so that the types of things that we're working on with our students in our elementary schools are the same types of language and expectations that we have right through grade 12. So they're not receiving different messages or, or different terminology when they get to the next level in their educational experience. High expectations for each learner. We're going to continue to evaluate and improve inclusive practices at all grade levels, making sure that our students, including special education students, have access to grade-level experiences, expectations, and in inclusive classrooms where there's an opportunity for them to be supported and to, to meet the state-level standards. We recognize that there will always be a, a small group of, of students that may need substantially separate support, but that, that should not be, that should not be a large number of students, that should be the exception to the rule, not the rule. And we're going to continue our progress with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Working Group, including having our staff begin working on action steps and designing professional development for the 21, 22 school year. And if you notice on these slides, I should have, I should have mentioned, on each of these slides is a list of the subcommittees that helped to, there was no shortage of ideas of ways that we could, we could continue to learn and grow and to support these objectives. But these are the staff members that were involved in creating and helping to prioritize our next steps. So objective number three, we had talked about understanding by design, that's what UBD stands for, that's the terminology. It would be ideal to have common planning time, as McHala knows, is part of hers, getting to help make that happen sooner than later. As you know, we have two professional development days during the school year and then we have the three, the, the two prior to the start of the school year. Our goal for this year that we encouraged for, for teachers and for schools that are adopting new goals was for them to focus on one unit during the 2021, 22 school year. And while that won't get us across the finish line, it's, it's a noble goal in the sense that if we have a majority of teachers working on this, that many more teachers will have the experience of designing curriculum in this way. And the first time you design a unit like this, it can be a difficult process, but it's an important one and you become more adept at it and your first unit isn't necessarily your best unit, but you learn and you grow and it really can be a more rewarding way to teach as well because you're really focused on outcomes and you're, you're having those performance-based assessments that, that can be common and you can have those kinds of discussions as a, as a team as well in terms of what worked and what didn't. Strategic objective number four, we've talked about structures and processes and trying to become more efficient. We're going to solicit technology needs from programs and department levels to invest in form of the technology team as they create a new five-year technology plan. So we're asking our teachers to work with our, our technology experts and gain the voice of both in this, in this creation of this new plan. We realize more than ever that it is the combination of the two. It's not just a tool, it's the way that we teach and learn now and making sure that those voices are part of that plan. We're going to explore and address inequities and needs that were revealed in the findings across our K through total schools and programs, and we'll be revisiting those with you as, as the year goes on. So if we notice that there, there is a particular need that's not being addressed in our, that we offer, able to offer in one school, but we're not able to offer in another, that may be a discussion that we bring to your attention now, that we feel is a, that may need to be a priority or may need to be addressed. If we're noticing that certain types of students are more likely to be disciplined, that's something that we're going to work with our school-based teams to address and come up with action plans as to how we can work with groups of students who may be over-identified in certain areas depending upon what the area is. And we're going to increase the connection between our program, our budget, our technology, and our capital, camp, and process. We want these things to be closely aligned. We've asked our, our buildings to adopt building-based goals that are aligned with the Strategy for District Improvement. We've asked our principals to adopt goals that are aligned. They in turn have worked with their staff to align their goals. And as we move through this process, we want you to understand why if we're, if there's a particular item that is in the budget, how it's going to help us to meet the goal or how the absence of that particular item may interfere or create a difficult time for us achieving that goal in the timeline that we're hoping, those types of things. So our next step, we've already talked about how the schools are aligned with goals, teachers are aligned with our goals. We're going to be presenting the Strategy of District Improvement for each of the school committees and our, in our union as well. We're going to start implementing our strategic initiatives and we're going to review this plan annually and adjust as needed because as we begin this work, we may uncover that there are additional steps that need to be taken or certain things that maybe we go through more quickly than we had in the district and we can take on a new challenge. So my hope is that by giving you this summary tonight, you'll notice to the left that our core values on this chart are listed here. You may recall that in the summer of 2020, we created these core values during the pandemic and they served us well to guide us in some of our decision-making. It was interesting that through the entry funding process, these values were supported through the reflections of many of our community members about what they wanted in their school. To the right is what we call a theory of action. And we summarize, we began to talk about what we needed to do in order to achieve our goal or our vision. So you'll see written there is an if then statement of what, if we do these things, then we would expect to see this result. That's what our if then statement is. You see the four main objectives across, and then I do need are the initiatives for each goal, which are really another word for the action steps that we're going to take in order to try to achieve our goals. So there is a lot in here about our belief in students and our need to provide equitable opportunities for all children to access grade-level curriculum and to provide those children with the support they need to get there. Smart is something you get. And we believe that with research-based practices and with that kind of growth mindset, we will, in answer to your question, that is how we raise the level of all of our students on those scores. But it's not through teaching to the test, it's about a belief system in all children.
I have a question. So I don't have any more kids at this school, so I'm a little bit detached, but I had a, a friend reach out and was concerned about, and pardon me if I have the terminology incorrect, but basically leveling, basically where we have English at different levels and that, and I don't remember which class it was, but that there was sort of, and it sounds like the overall strategy is to kind of get rid of that and everybody's at the same level?
No, it's not everybody at the same level. It's every child has access to grade-level curriculum in the least restrictive environment. So you can still have AP, you can still have honors because some students need to go beyond grade-level expectations.
Okay.
But there aren't separate tests for children.
Right.
There's one set of standards and every child needs to have access or the ability and the support to meet those standards to the best of our ability.
Okay.
So yes, it has been collapsing of some levels in order to meet inclusion ratios as well because a child who has the right to be in an inclusive environment may be inadvertently put in what is basically a substantially separate classroom.
Yep.
Because they're in a classroom with primarily students on IP's. So we also have a legal obligation to those children as well.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Are you?
Go ahead, you go first.
Could you tell? I didn't even have an idea.
No, you're just, you're so focused.
I just was wondering about if you all are having any conversations about interdisciplinary connections and UBD, in my experience, offers such rich opportunity for more of that. I know you're, it's a struggle to even get every English teacher in one room, never mind starting to have those, but just where that might factor in.
We're very excited about the possibilities because understanding by design would allow us not only to focus more on this effective teaching practices and, and access to the curriculum, but through performance-based assessment, relevance, voice, and choice. And because of the platform that we're using, it will allow teachers to collaborate and even compare where there might be interdisciplinary connections to further our progress. And again, not to overwhelm people because remember, we have to take this one step at a time. But there's also a very effective strategy called project-based learning, which focuses on authentic challenge, question, or problem, where students have a, have a variety of ways that they can approach a solution to that problem. They have an authentic audience and then they, they are able to apply, but also go beyond to create, synthesize, reach those higher-order thinking skills that we want to see in a performance assessment. So yes, absolutely, that's big picture where we want to go. But we need to first start by articulating what our curriculum is and that can be part, that's going to be part of those performance assessments. that's going to be part of those performance assessments that they they start creating as they start to see those connections. But there's also some training there that may need to take place with regards to design those experiences.
Thank you. That's exciting.
So, yeah, so I'm so excited to give you this opportunity and your leadership team to do this because I know that when we brought you on, I mean, you were within the district for all of, when we gave you the opportunity to be superintendent, then the pandemic hit, right? And so we were in reactive mode for a while. I know there was a lot of work going on still you were trying to get done, but I know this is really exciting for you and for us to sort of really see this come together. You know, I know that we've all heard the stories of unaligned curriculum and other things that are going on that could always be improved on a seat on one piece of paper is at least as a starting point is pretty remarkable. And I know I'm looking at you, but I'm looking at everybody that works, you know, in the district. I know this is.
It was a team effort.
I know this is a team effort, so I don't want you to think that. One of the things I think for me on this is you had, you made two, one point that I thought was really interesting, well, you made a lot of points that were interesting. One point that I I definitely wanted to sort of maybe call you out on a little bit. One of your comments was about having student choice, which I think is really important. I mean, I know we're trying to meet so many things in here, but student choice is really important. I should say student and family choice because it's, you know, family choices about their students and students themselves having their own voice and growing their voice as they as they move up through the district. But, you know, one of the comments that that I've had and that we've worked a little bit on, Michaela and I and some other folks have on the dual enrollment stuff or, you know, maybe Lemon and I are going to start talking to you all about maybe school start times eventually and we're looking at that, all these things that have some family choice and some student choice, but I'm getting to the end of it, I swear. I noticed that as, and this is just my child's, both of my children's experiences and I hear it a lot and maybe some folks who've had folks like go students go through the whole school system can say this, but we, you say in here that you want to launch them to be contributing to successive local, national, and global communities, which I think is such a lofty goal. But I feel like at times when they get to those older grades, grades 11 and 12, maybe they're still in such a restrictive environment. And so then they get launched, right? And they're critical thinkers and they've got a lot of great experiences, but then they get launched into this sort of a variety of Netherlands directions that are, you know, work, trades, military, college, you know, anything that they're choosing to do next. And I feel like there needs to be more flexibility at the upper grades built into your improvement plan because I feel like you go from seven period, you're scheduled from 7:35 to 1:49 and there isn't a lot of flexibility on how to live your life and getting prepared to do that next step. So when I, when I think you talk about student choice, I'm really hoping you're talking about dual enrollment, kids leaving, being able to leave campus to work, you know, things that are actually getting them ready to go from this incredibly restrictive environment to the real world. And I want to make sure that's in here somewhere because I don't see it, I see you doing great work, Michaela, but I'm just saying it is a problem in my opinion that or a challenge that I think we need to address.
So I think you see it when you say.
So I think that falls for us, that falls more under our vision of the graduate, right? Which directly aligns to our core values in the SDI. You know, we see it with our co-op placements are increasing year to year. We see it with our dual enrollment policy that's a little bit more stated in our handbook at this point. So, you know, it's promoted to more individuals, but I'm going to keep plugging this new bell schedule, right? Like one of the things that we're looking to do is creating that flex time for a student within our daily schedule to have that more personal responsibility to know, I need to go to Mr. Fraser for extra help for this, or I need to go to Ms. Davis for extra help with this, or I'm going to use that time to work on career path development, to work on college applications. So those are all things that we are looking to build into our schedule to give a little bit more, structure is still necessary even through age 18, right? But to give them a little bit more freedom and independence throughout their their weekly schedule, if you will, to explore some of those other things.
So I guess for me, I would just maybe like to see in your theory of action, some reference to graduating independence levels because I, I think it, I don't know, Eric, I mean, you've had four kids go through the school system, start to finish. I've had two, I don't know. Paula, you've had two and I'm not saying that they've come out as great, as great individuals. I just think they're not quite getting that level of independence that they need because it's still such a structured environment. So I'd like to see some graduated flexibility slash independence built into this theory of change because I think in order to meet your contributing assess of local, national, global communities, they are going to need those skills. They're going to need to be able to figure out how to function out there. I know it's my responsibility as a parent and our responsibility as a community to build these children like this, but I think in the school setting, I'd like to see a little bit more of that in here. That's just my input. Other than that, I think it's great.
And again, a bit of a category, whether it be structures and processes, but it's also in the, in the learning experiences that we design. So I, I think there's definitely an opportunity to give that more of an emphasis as, as you have suggested, but I think it truly would be powerful in those two areas. And as we begin to examine those really kind of questioning, you know, and you look at your, your schedule opportunities, you know, what comparing goals versus the structure and are we limiting ourselves beyond the structure? Now, having designed schedules as a, as a high school principal before and having recreated schedules with a common planning time, a delayed start, an advisory block and a student activity block in particular because we wanted, we had a group of students, for example, who did not feel connected as connected to the school community. So this block would have everything from, from chess club to knitting to you name it, but an opportunity for kids who couldn't stay after school because they didn't have a late bus to feel connected to their school. Whatever schedule you create, there will be a give and take and the scheduling committee needs to look at what their priorities are. And your high school is a little bit more complicated than your average bear because you also have a CTE program, right? So as they go through this process, they're going to look at what their priorities are and they're going to let those priorities take them on a journey as to what that might look like. As they go on that journey, there are going to be certain things that they lose and certain things they gain. But open campus and these types of opportunities are creating a block at the end of the day that doesn't rotate, let's say, so that people could be released for work-study, for example. Those are structural changes that can take place, but those are conversations that need to take place at the building level and it will also need to be presented to the school committee eventually and stand before you and say, here's what we gain, here's some of the limitations, here's why we support this, please support us. And being able to go back to that schedule and revisit if necessary, if once they put it into place, they noticed something didn't work out the way they had anticipated, that kind of opportunity. And kind of challenging the status quo and being willing to try new things that we was something that we took away from the pandemic as a, as a bright spot, I think is going to continue with us. We're not afraid to try new things, but we also need to be able to go back and revise if we find that something is not working out the way we hoped to. And we hope that you'll support us in that as we go on this journey together.
I, I like, I'm excited about everything you're saying. I just would like to see it built into the core values. So for instance, you say build resilience, perseverance, and persistence so that our students are prepared to navigate the world as contributing blah, blah, blah. Those are important words, not blah, 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 but important words.
You want to build independence.
Yeah, I want to build independence, like, I mean.
We will, we will present that to the administrative team.
Thank you.
And I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'm going to have to reprint our T-shirts now. And I could spend like a lifetime talking about this, but just to build off of that, I hope we also consider kind of thinking about that status quo, like where synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities can be engaged? Like, does a kid need to be here every single day? Could they, do they need to come one day a week? Or, you know, just that we could think more open-mindedly, particularly at those upper grades of more thinking of 11 and 12 as transitional periods into post-secondary opportunities and not just thinking, well, you have to show up every single day and you have to be here.
And it's exciting for us too because there's no shortage of things that we haven't talked about. We're at the phase where we try to pare down to what we needed to do first to get to those levels, but we're right there with you. We're excited about the possibilities and it's exciting to do this kind of work and to think about how we can transform teaching and learning.
And I think that's one of the many blessings in disguise from the last year and a half going on, two years at this point, right? That I think we've, we're all giving ourselves permission to think outside the box and step away from the traditional model of education. I see it with our own staff where in the past, you know, we've all been very guilty of, well, this is what the handbook says, like, we will not stray from this. It's very black and white. And I think we're much more student-focused, student-centered than we ever have been before. Not to say that we haven't been, but I think we are much more flexible, we are much more supportive of individual needs versus group needs. And I think that's probably one of the best things that has come out of this experience for us is that we, we are challenging the status quo and, I mean, this is just a small representation of the staff members who are leading that charge and daily I am presented with ideas and models and plans and, you know, what can we do this? Can we try this? Or here's a way I think I can help this kid. Nothing is off the table. And I think that's a pretty powerful thing for us as educators that we're, we're excited about and if we have the blessing and support of our school committee, it's even better to know that we can charge forward with some of those changes.
I was just going to add quickly, the things that I had noted as concern about grades 11 and 12, those are really absolved in a, and really mitigated in a, an aligned curriculum. If you have a really consistently aligned curriculum and you have, you know, if you're doing performance-based assessments and you have a way of looking across all grades and that sort of thing, that's totally perfect. One of these days, I actually believe in a world that there will be organic assessment, which means you don't have to formally assess.
I love it.
Assess as people go along.
I completely support you with everyone else to avoid this discussion with this now. It feels very close, very energizing, very engaging and I'm excited to see where you take it from here. And I go to every update along the way. This, for me personally, is just a wonderful discussion. Thank you so much. A wonderful update.
Appreciate it. It's a, it's a wonderful team and it's, it's helped us as well from the perspective of some, we're, we're ready to work on it. Thank you so much. So I have a few other items for you, but not as Michaela's staff. The, as you know, the commissioner, on September 30th, I sent out to most families and staff that this turned out the amount of quarantine wasn't standing through at least November 1st. I have not seen any updates yet, but as soon as there are two updates, we will communicate. Test and stay is operational and we have been assured support by CI City should we need it. We were originally supposed to be assigned support, our nurses, and in some cases, our fire departments or the border patrol have stepped in where we've had more than five students that, for example, used to be tested at school and tested have held out. So we're able to take care of our test and stay needs in-house right now and sometimes with a little bit of support from, from our communities and we're grateful for the support from our communities in that way. If we extend beyond our capacity, the state has promised us that they will send us a big team who will be here on site to test our students to keep us going in terms of test and stay. And you recall, that's what allows a student if they have been identified as a post-contend when they're asymptomatic to be tested but remain in school to minimize the amount of quarantine time on our students. We have already shared the vaccination rates and we have already shared the practices continue since COVID. In your packet, you will see a legal opinion from attorney DePerey regarding the potential renovating, relocating a building of central office building. And you notice, I do send you each member of town share, shall we compare it? We will recommend to the ratio for the count of people enrollment, this is not a whole experience, we will inform all member towns. Article four of the agreement tells about the construction cost of campus outlet and also the recommendation to conduct a need assessment, independent study to make recommendations of associated costs. So we'll be discussing that in upcoming sacred meeting, but this, this came in before our sacred meeting, so that is there for you and attorney DePerey as well.
Yes, the only comment I made, you previously approved the, the painter. You'll notice it says that it doesn't include construction, legal representation and advice, but we'll do it anyways. And we do construction projects. In fact, I was construction council for the Bridgewater Rainbow High School project when they built that 200-plus million dollar school building. I was their legal counsel. So I can work with you or the other attorneys in my office as we go through that project and we won't talk to anyone else.
And I, I, attorney, whatever question you have, honey. Obviously, we've talked about the administration building for many years and what the solution is still remains to be seen, but whether it is a joint committee project or whether it's a civil life project with the district towns funding it is really where this.
Yeah, it's really clear in the regional agreement. It says it specifically, the central office is in the regional agreement. So there can't be any doubt as to mechanism that either improvements or to demolish a building, a new building, you're going to have to follow the regional school district agreement.
Yeah, that was sort of reason for the reach out, but who owned it? Who owns the project? It seems like it's this committee.
You love the place, you love the water, the ocean, you know, let's keep on going. So, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask if this was something, I know we've been discussing this forever, ever, since Joy and I, actually since the tough, I think before then, for a long time. But I didn't know if we had like a projected time, but I think you just sort of said that we're just starting the conversation now, so if that answered my question.
The other item in your package tonight is the budget planning schedule and it's very similar to your past, you know, the timing of the schedule. I want to point out a little caveat. We held our first TRIT meeting, discussed a civil life capital plan, is that in?
It wasn't our email though, it was over here.
I can't, I apologize. I must have missed it. I'm asking Jim to find it in the email since it arrived like a hard copy.
No, sorry, she can go over. It starts now and goes until next year.
Only change is the timeline.
Do you want it?
No. Thank you, thank you though.
We should be able to recite it by now.
It's the, the TRIT meeting that we held in September and we have another one scheduled in November. They asked for a follow-up meeting with us and that went very well in terms of explaining our capital planning process for civil life, our past projects, our use of E and D and our potential future communications regarding needs that, that may not be able to be covered by accessibility as our, as that number decreases for several reasons, one of which being the money coming from the bank broke issue and then the fact that our mountain need this year is, appears to be going down. So there's not as much to put towards our, our capital plan, but not through lack of many maintenance projects that have been done over the past seven years and just did a nice job of letting out those projects and presenting those to the towns as well. The other note, change that I'd like to note is that our joint school committee meeting and again, thank you for thinking outside the box and allowing us to present our special education, our technology, budget presentation and for our elementary schools, our curriculum and elementary presentation during our joint school committee meeting so that they present just once to the members as opposed to four times. And then of course, we can always have them come back and follow up with any additional questions you may have, but presenting once I think will save many of us some time. So we appreciate that, we hope that works. And again, if it doesn't, we're happy to go back to the way we used to do it, but we appreciate your willingness to try that. The last item in your packet that I will speak of at this time is the October 1st enrollment. So on the first side of this, enrollment. So on the first side of this, enrollment in dark blue. If you go over a few quarters of the way over to your right, you'll see the middle school total. If you go all the way down to the bottom, you'll see 508. Where you see SC in the top, that stands for school choice. The number of school choice students in the school or grade level. If you follow the top line over a little bit more, you'll see the high school total. If you follow that down to the bottom, you'll see that our total enrollment on October 1st was 1,062. The middle school enrollment has declined by 16 students this year as opposed to last year at 524. And the high school total has declined by 10 students. It was down, it was, actually, I think that's 20 students. I'm sorry, girl. My eyes say this, that's good right now. Has declined by 20 students. It was at 1,080 to figure that out here. If I have that right? If I have it right?
Can I ask just a quick question on the numbers? When you're done, I was going to look it up.
You are most likely definitely right. You know how I am with numbers? I thought we were at 1040 last year, but I might be confusing that with something else. Go with Jill's number.
I'm just curious, of the students that either elected to go full online last year and stay that way for the end of the year, or kids who left the, students who left the district for other schools, like private schools, for instance, did they come back? In person or did they stay?
The majority of our students who were remote came back.
Okay.
Yep.
But the private school students or the students that went off to private?
We don't have that breakdown yet. So we don't know to what extent that where the influx or where the patterns remain the same. So we'll be compiling that data as soon as it becomes available to us.
We don't want to be too, because I was curious.
Just making up numbers.
If you turn it over and you go towards the middle, it says Silver Lake FY perception percentage. You'll notice that the Halifax assessment percentage has increased. The Kingston assessment has increased. And that the Clinton assessment has decreased by 1%. If you go down to noon 31, shared cost percentages, you'll see that the Halifax percentage has decreased. Kingston has increased from the previous year. Clinton has increased from the previous year. So those are some of the assessment trends relative to enrollment. And I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. New business.
Madam Chair, is it, can we take a couple minute break?
Sure. Yeah. Buttons?
That's great.
Okay. Button break.
Appreciate that.
Business?
Couple times.
Don't know if there's any business to put in there. Old business, we've been talking about the regional agreement sometime now. Fred will be my way, we surface in a moment. So the census data was released. And I think Fred has the numbers with him. The census data, 2020 actually came out with Halifax with 7,749 residents. Kingston 13,708. And Clinton 2,093. And believe it or not, it didn't change any of the percentages for the regional agreement. Excuse me, Trump says we do have to check that every 10 years. That is something that has to be done. So the number of seats, the weighting of the votes, nothing changes for the next 10 years. My understanding, and I'll double check when Fred comes back, even though nothing changes, I believe we do have to put the regional agreement before each of the towns to verify that this has been updated, it's been looked at, and that there are no changes. And I'll double check that with Brad. So Fred, you came right up to.
You got to the census, right?
Yeah. So we just discussed how the census data didn't change the number of seats or the weighting of the votes for the regional agreement. And I believe now what needs to happen is even though there's no change, we do still have to put it in front of town meeting at some point. Have it reauthorized or just acknowledge the fact that we did our due diligence with the census data.
Well, I'm looking under the weighted voting provision of the agreement. It doesn't actually state we need to go back to the towns again. Because it's set up here and it says, says the weighted vote of each committee member shall be established every 10 years according to the federal census. Based on the 2000 federal census. And it puts forth the information, so there's no change. So when we got to the 2010 census, there was no change. We didn't go to town meeting.
Okay, that's, that's.
2020. There is a change, but it's not significant enough to change the weight of the votes. The system that was set up in the regional agreement tried to convert it into numbers of people and vote per person. It doesn't specifically have to be that way, but this is the best way to do it. Because the other way would require that every time someone votes, you're going to have to have a calculator. So this is the method that was established originally when the regional agreement was created. And I believe now, if you review that, it should be in the minutes of your meeting that you review that. But I don't believe it requires any further action. I was here in 2010. It did not go to the towns in 2010.
Okay. Perfect. I'd like that answered.
Do we need to take a vote over? Or no?
Well, you can take a vote saying that no further action is required and let the minutes reflect that. So why don't I make that motion?
Okay.
I'll second that, Karen, it's Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Any further discussion?
My question. Percentage wise, don't need to equal the vote weights? That's kind of the way the agreement goes. I don't have it in front of me, so I forget what the weight is.
Yeah, so I actually have, I have the populations and percentages in front of me.
Okay.
And the Halifax is 7,749. Kingston is 13,708. Clinton is 2,930. The percentages would come out to Halifax 32, Kingston 56, Clinton 12. There's a Supreme Court decision that says that it doesn't have to be exact. Your regional agreement actually says it is, but it never has been.
Makes sense.
Because the only way you can make it exact, again, is to have a calculator. And every time someone votes, you calculate that person's weight.
Right. What was the percentage last time? They go all, no?
Just like.
Just like, really? Oh, wow.
Yeah, there hasn't been substantial changes, you know. And in the census data over the last 10 years, I actually have it. If you want me to, I could tell you in a moment.
I was just going to figure out the 10 year move. Because every year we see, you know, cost allocation move by the 1%.
I can, I can tell you in a moment. So this is alphabetically, so it could be Halifax first. Halifax went down by 1.86%. Kingston went down by 1.12%. And Clinton, those are negligible, really. Clinton is minus 3.11. No, excuse me, minus 0.5. So all of it went down a little bit.
No.
Right, good. Any other comments on it? Thank you for that. All of us are bigger?
All right.
All right. Okay, thank you. All righty, reports with Special Committee Silver Lake Educational Association.
Good evening, everybody. So it was great to hear so much discussion of teaching and learning and all the great things that are going on in schools. And not just about COVID. Unfortunately, I'm going to talk about COVID. You know, I think I said in the last meeting too that it really feels like things are back to normal except for the masks. And I actually just polled our membership. And over 80% of our members supports the mask mandate ending. And of that, the majority does want it to be an 80% vaccination rate before the mask mandate goes away. So, you know, the teachers, the majority of us are more than ready to not be wearing masks, to get to see the bottom halves of our students' faces and all that kind of thing. And, you know, I'm very interested too to see what the state says on November 1st and how things develop. I do support that data going out on the website. I think the union would support it as well. I think that that would be a tool to maybe, like I said last time, you know, if people can see that getting vaccinated might contribute to that mask policy ending, I think that might be motivating for some people who just haven't gotten around to it yet. I did speak to our membership and say that based on the public health issues and the possibility of the mask mandate ending, encouraging our members to consider getting vaccinated if they haven't yet. I know that this is something that the district has chosen not to actively push. I do, you know, appreciate the school giving the information about vaccines and that kind of thing to the students. I do know that a number of other districts are taking a more active role in promoting vaccination. I've heard reports from BER, Middleborough, Plymouth, Hingham are all actively encouraging their students to get vaccinated. And I know that, you know, it's not a mandate, it is a personal and a family choice. But there are a lot of other things that the school does promote that are individual choices. You know, healthy eating, for example, is an individual choice. And we put up things about healthy eating around the school and that kind of thing. I get a lot of things, even as an employee, in my mailbox about, you know, joining yoga club, walking club, eating healthy, even something specifically encouraging me to get my flu vaccine. So, you know, it is something that especially if we find that we're just shy of that 80% and that stays the criteria, that I think I personally would like to see the school think about taking a more active role in doing. You know, we're all eager to get back to normal as soon as we can. And the mask going away would be a big part of it. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, John.
So I appreciate, John, your work on, and SCLA's work and all of you. Fantastic. And I think we owe it to you. And this is just my personal opinion. I can't speak for the school committee, although maybe if we took a vote, we could. But I think we should be advocating for people to get these vaccines. And I think we should be educating people and encouraging people to do it. And I don't know why in the school committee we're not doing it. So I would support that kind of activity wholeheartedly. And if someone else, anybody else does, I'll make a motion to that effect, but...
I completely agree.
I just, I think we're taking, in my opinion, we're taking too passive of a role here as a school committee. And I think we need to be leading a little bit more on this topic. And I feel very strongly about it. And so, and it sounds like my friend Lucas down the table does well. So I would like to see us take more activity or action on encouraging vaccinations for COVID. I want to put up a thermometer out front, see how far we're getting to our goal. I said that last meeting. I don't know why we're not doing this. So it's just educating, we're not mandating. And I have a student who's in college, and they're all mandated to be vaccinated to be in school, you know? And the school systems, the public school systems in California are mandating all students and teachers to be vaccinated, period. So we're not there yet, but I think the very least we could be doing is doing a better job educating and advocating as a school committee on this topic.
So I just have a question, because I generally agree. And, and, and John, hearing from you is actually enlightening. Because honestly, I didn't really know what the teachers thought. So that's really helpful. And I'm sure the people who are in that 20% who are not advocating for masks, they would just continue to wear masks, I would assume, and not necessarily be upset that I would be the one. But maybe there would be some of that. But anyways, do we really need to take a vote? I mean, I, you think we need to take a vote to do what though?
I would make a motion, and you all don't have to second it, because I've had this happen to me before. But I would make a motion that as a district, at least grade 7 through 12, because that's all we have responsibility over, that we are actively educating and advocating for our students and our staff to be vaccinated. That includes marketing, outreach, communications, opportunities, sharing information.
I'll second that, but I have a question.
I think I'm going to open our discussion, so go ahead.
So my question is just up. And I'm sorry, because I have kids in school, so I don't see the email notifications. But are we already doing some of this with families or are we not really?
Seems like we're just telling them where they can go get vaccinated.
So the nurses have been providing information as it becomes available as a point of contact, a place to get information from. Early on, they shared information regarding COVID to educate families. And, but they, they have stopped short of advocating. They, as members of this community, we have, we, there have been some, even members of our own school committees that have expressed concern that we are not medical professionals. And that they don't feel comfortable going beyond what DPH and DESI has mandated, expected, or recommends. So I think that's been, they've been part of the conversation in some of our communities and some of our school committee meetings. And so all, most of the communication, although I provide updates as they come out from the Department of Public Health, but most of the health related or detailed information has come from our nurse leader or our school nurses.
I, go ahead and then I want to make a comment as well.
I was just saying, like, as somebody who has been against the mandating of it and feeling that oversteps her ground, I'm certainly open to the idea of educating the same way we would around any other public health issue, including things like obesity and walking and lots of other public health issues. So, you know, I represent just my own opinion and I know that I was somebody who has been against, I see a line there between a mandate and an education. So I would fully support the motion as you have presented it.
I'm going to make a couple comments. First of all, Summer had to lead for prior commitment. Now, we all know she feels very strongly, in a different direction on this topic. So I feel a little uncomfortable that knowing her feelings and we're going forward with this discussion and a possible vote without her. Hey, I'm going to make that, time is everything in life. But I do want to acknowledge, we're having this conversation and we know we have a committee member who feels very strongly in the opposite direction. I'll tell you, I'm not comfortable with the motion the way it is on the floor right now. I would not be comfortable with teachers in the classroom advocating for getting the vaccination. I think there would be no control over the messaging, the delivery, et cetera. I would support perhaps a school controlled messaging. I don't want to see a teacher standing up in the classroom advocating to perhaps a child that can't for some reason be vaccinated. And we'd be uncomfortable, you know, no offense, teacher asking how many people are already vaccinated. You can't control everybody. And no offense, please.
No, no, Paul, if you don't mind my making a point of clarification, I agree with that 100%. And I would actually... that a hundred percent, and I would actually oppose if the district asked us to say those things in the classroom. I don't think we should be saying that in, in the classroom either. I think any of these messages should come from administration through official channels, and we should not be saying any of that in the classroom.
Okay, thank you, John, so I didn't mean any offense by that.
No, no, no.
Okay.
That was my intent, Madam Chair.
And that's how I also supported it. I assumed it was yes.
That's why my motion says the district defined by, I guess I'll say is defined by the administration. And that was my intent. Was it?
It wasn't, okay, I heard advocating and I thought, I thought in her classroom.
Nope. I saw the dis- emotion, I don't know, Karen, maybe you haven't written it down, but...
As a district, seven through twelve, actively supporting for students and staff to be vaccinated, but I can add in as defined by administration.
That was my intent.
Do you want it administration or the school?
No, I mean, as executed by the administration, carried out by the administration.
Not the teachers.
Right, so how does administration carry it on that?
I think...
So if you are making a statement from the school committee that you're encouraging all members of the public, staff, and students to get vaccinated, then, you know, that's the school committee position. As far as administration, I don't know how, what their role is in further disseminating that.
Well, we have perhaps, that's a very good point. We've asked UJ or administration to push out, rather than perhaps put on the website, push out the numbers that we know that eighty percent. Perhaps there is some language that could be crafted with them to encourage those that are considering vaccinations to vote, get vaccinated, to push us up and over.
Yeah, you could say, I, I agree with that direction. You could say in that particular messaging that in order to consider not, it has to reach eighty percent. So, you know, without actually pleading with them to do it, you could point out the obvious.
And that perhaps doesn't go as far as, I think maybe your motion wanted it to, Leslie Anne's, I'm gonna ask you to comment, but...
I mean, I, I think we're making this more complicated than it needs to be, to be frank. I mean, I just, I mean, I appreciate your opinion as a lawyer, I mean, your state as a lawyer, I just think we're being too passive about advocating not to meet the eighty percent goal, because I mean, that's fantastic. I just think in general, we should be advocating as a school district and as a school committee on folks getting vaccinated. Stop the spread, wear a mask, socially distance, get vaccinated. Like, there are a million examples out there of schools who are advocating for this. There shouldn't be too difficult to find several good ones that are out there that we can emulate. So I just think we're making this way too complicated.
It's coming from the school, I know those school systems, I represent.
Not just here, all across the country, from...
Right, but I, I have school systems that require the vaccination of all staff. And of, and there are many school systems that are requiring that, not nearly a majority, it's a, it's a small minority, but the communication comes from the school committee, it doesn't come from the administration. I don't have any of those situations where it came from administration. And Paul had made a good point, and the point was, we can send data through administration out to the public, but I think the, the school committee is the legal authority in charge of making those statements to the public.
How is it different than like all the emails I get every Friday from the nurse leader about like health, like, to me, I just assumed that's what you meant, like that, that information I get every Friday that's all about washing my hands and wearing my mask properly, that we would just simply be also saying, and here's the science supporting getting vaccinated, and that, and that's the message, that it's not like any more complicated than that.
Just like the sign on the wall that says, get vaccinated. Like, I don't know why this is too more, I'm not, this is such a complicated topic, I understand. I'm not asking the school committee, even though I might have a different belief, to mandate vaccines. I'm just saying we should be sharing public health information about the ways that you stop the spread, which include getting vaccinated. And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, that, that, that Summer's not here, but I've missed out on a lot of votes because I wasn't there and I missed out on the vote because I wasn't there.
I was just pointing it out, listen.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just saying, I just don't think we should not take, we should be as passive anymore. I don't know, Lucas.
I agree.
You agree?
I agree.
So can we maybe call the motion?
And can you read the motion one more time?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, the motion's on the table, so he's just gonna read it.
Leslie, do you want me to read it as, as it was first stated?
Sure.
Okay, so it was...
Thank you.
Made a motion to encourage vaccination, educating and advocating as a district, and then we said execute, as a district, seven through twelve, executed by administration for students and staff to be vaccinated. But I mean, we can make the wording a little prettier than that, if you want to. You second the motion?
I, yeah, I, I called, I called the question.
Oh, I just think the motion is kind of vague.
I think it's very good, too.
Because I don't even know who's responsible for what.
Right.
So it either means no action or an abundance of action by administrations. It varies, it varies. So it doesn't have any meat, it doesn't have any point, it's kind of, it's very vague, that's just, it's not administrations...
Just parliamentarian-wise, we, you can't debate when the questions are called, so we need to...
There was no vote, but along calling the question.
Thank you, Fred.
But there's a vote and calling the question.
I'm happy, Madam Chair, to craft the motion better. The intent is there.
Can I make an amendment, or do we need to call a question?
Fred's better than this.
Can I suggest an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as parliamentary procedure, you can state an amendment and then we vote on the amendment.
Yeah. Okay. So bear with me, but...
How about a second?
Has to be seconded. So I would suggest that we amend the motion to add that we are directing the nurse's communication that she does now to be more, not forceful, but more proactive in terms of recommending vaccination and providing more data and information on the benefit of being vaccinated. Because that takes it up a notch, and that's more specific, that's pretty direct.
So I, I mean, I think that's a great way of executing the intent. I think I don't wanna limit it to that. I mean, unless the one, all right, whatever. If that gets us started, I'm fine.
Maybe we can then amend to say...
Couldn't you amend to say through exterior signage at the school, through emails from the school committee and/or the administration, through emails, through the nurse, and as may be, as may be further determined by the school committee at subsequent times?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a question about what you just added to it. If we vote this through, we approve it, what do they do next?
For me specifically, what I said was that the nurse would include in a regular emails to be more proactive, pushing for the vaccination and giving data online to the officials.
For me, they go and they create a marketing and outreach campaign for the school that educates folks and advocates for vaccines. I don't tell them how to teach in their classroom, I'm not gonna tell them exactly how to, like, what exactly to post.
I wasn't asking, Leslie Anne, what exactly to post.
Okay.
I was asking, what added some other language, some other thoughts? What I was asking was what specifically happens if we approved that based on adding his language in.
Okay, sorry.
And I, I missed a lot of your language. Sorry.
Well, nothing to second it, I'll, I'll...
If I can just speak freely for a moment, I think, while I can appreciate your analogy, Mr. Lay, of, you know, yes, we push up healthy eating habits and we don't want our students to vape, you know, we want you to walk and do yoga. In my experience, generally, those are not politically divisive information sharing that is created, right? I think if you are asking our administration or our nurse leaders or our school nurses to push forward and encourage vaccination, you are putting them in a very difficult position. I think the weekly nurses' updates that go out currently, they share from a health and medical perspective, the information that is available, there are links to DESI's recommendations, links to DPH and CDC's recommendations and guidelines, and it's very factual. I think the minute you cross the line and ask us to encourage or motivate or to somehow push people in the direction to make a decision that really should be a staff or student and their family's decision, you are putting us in a very difficult position.
Madam Chair, I know I'm not a member of the committee, but technically, this is my time, so, I think Michaela's point is actually very well taken, that, and I actually, I kept my mouth shut because I'm not on the committee, but when people started saying the nurse leader, that made me feel uncomfortable because I do think that would make them very anxious. And so, you know, I, I do personally support the motion on the floor, but I, I do think that if the committee wants to move in that direction, that you should be very cognizant of what Michaela's saying, in that the message should emanate from the district as a whole, not from Michaela Gill or Jim DuPille or even the superintendent, but from the district.
How's the motion?
I think if we want to make a motion, if the school committee has a recommendation and wants to output that, that would be more fair than to put administration in a position to, to do something on our behalf. That's a dispositive motion.
I think that's what she was arguing before. I think the issue is that Paul had said, okay, so, or maybe you had said, what's the action then from it?
Right.
And so, if the action, if the, if the motion is the school committee advocates for this and you're asking for an action, then you have to attach something to it. By means of what?
Yeah, I mean, I think if it wasn't a letter out saying what the school committee thinks, that would be more fair to the administration than ask them to do, to develop and build a communication program that is, as you guys said, divisive or a hot topic or whatever you wanna say.
So I withdraw my amendment?
I just see it being done in lots of other schools, and I don't know why we're not doing it.
I don't, and I didn't feel like what Eric's amendment was a particular, and maybe doesn't go as far as what you were hoping, Leslie Anne, but like, that doesn't feel to me like it crosses, I mean, my daughter ate Cocoa Puffs at breakfast at the school server, yet we give information about like eating healthy all the time, you know, like, we, we do things often that don't align with like the values perfectly, but yet here we're saying the nurses provide information, they don't use it, go get it immediately, but the nurse should be able to defend the science behind the vaccine, and if they can't defend that position, there, there's an issue there. You know, like, I understand it puts a lot of pressure on the nurse leader, that is their job, like, to defend the science behind a medical recommendation. If, if there being a...
And I didn't mean to provide it. It's, I'm, I'm noticing it's turning into a longer conversation than, than you were anticipating, more complicated one.
But to recommend it, to say we, that we are, we're not just saying here's information that DESI has, we're saying we recommend that you get vaccinated, here is why we recommend it. We are medical professionals and we recommend it. To me, that doesn't feel like, and I understand it's politically divisive, and I know that it's gonna put her in that position, but that, I mean, the pandemic has put people in positions that they would rather not be in by nature of the job they serve.
If I, if I may add, I think what Michaela's trying to say is it's beyond being in an uncomfortable position, it's creating what could be, taking her focus off of, she, she has a part-time position, which has been, become increasingly complex, not only because of COVID, but now we're doing test and stay in six schools, and she's part of that process. And to add to that, to be the spokesperson as to, a defender of, of the COVID vaccine and expect for her to succeed where the CDC and federal government has failed, and think that she's going to be able with, to be able to support incoming complaints that she will receive from people who have a different opinion. I, I think we're, we're putting, putting her in a precarious position and in a position where she's not focused on taking care of students and, and taking care of the things that need, that we need to do because of COVID.
If I may, Madam Chair, very briefly, I, I agree with Jill, and it's like I said, after Michaela and Emily, I, I understand what you're saying a hundred percent as well, but I think as soon as, as soon as we ask someone to say, I recommend this, that puts them in a difficult position. But going with what Leslie Anne was talking about earlier, putting us, putting signs up that say, get the vaccine, that doesn't put anyone in an upward position. Now, some people may say, we don't like these signs, and then the administration can say, well, that's what the school committee voted, so take it up with them. And, you know, I think Chris is absolutely correct, too. A letter coming from the school committee, you know, doesn't put administrators or school health workers in the line of fire, but, you know, it does put you in the line of fire, so that's a decision that you, you guys are gonna have to make. But, but I, I agree with what both Michaela and Jill are saying on those points.
So, just throwing this out there for people to think about, but if we did put out a letter from the school committee, what if we said something basically reiterating the, the policy of the state that if we reached the eighty percent, then we'd be able to get rid of masks or make the decision to get rid of masks? And, you know, that we do think, I mean, this again, this could get political, we could say that we think it's better for education if we're able to lose the masks and kind of return more to normalcy, but in order to do that, we need to get to the eighty percent vaccination rate. We encourage you to do your part, to research, talk to your children's doctors, make the best decision for your family, but it's sort of promoting that and pushing it towards a return to normalcy. And I get this would have to be crafted pretty delicately.
I was gonna say, my only hesitancy would be that in ten days, that's all a lie because they've changed the benchmark again, and so everything we just said would be...
Is nobody, I'm gonna make one comment, and perfect, I speak in the least. If we go down this path and we issue a letter from the school committee, and not everybody is on board with this idea, when you vote something as a school committee, if you are not on the approving side, the prevailing side, you still stand by the vote of a school committee. I'm gonna be blatantly honest here, if we go down this road, I don't wanna see anything on social media by somebody who does not approve this. I don't wanna, I, this, you are an elected official, you are on a school committee, you have a vote that may go in a way that you do not, you are not in favor of, but part of being on a committee is you are on the committee and you stand behind that vote. I just wanna say that publicly right now.
And I think that's a really good reminder, Madam Chair.
Just, do we wanna make a motion to send a letter from the school committee, or?
I have a motion.
I know, now we're...
Procedureally, we still don't, a motion from Leslie Anne.
I got my amendment.
We have more amendment, yeah.
I think you had a motion, I think you had a second to the motion.
Correct.
So...
But no amendment.
Correct.
Okay. So, do we wanna retract that, or do we wanna put that out for vote? And again, we've had so much discussion, I would put you on the spot. Karen would have to read that.
To read which one?
The original.
The original, I was seconding, it was, the original motion was, Leslie Anne made a motion to encourage educating and advocating for vaccination as a district, seven through twelve, for students and staff to be vaccinated. We, we had executed by administration, but we sort of took that out, and then we said, as a district, seven through twelve, actively advocate and encourage vaccination for students and staff.
Okay, no further discussion, we're going to put that to a vote. All those in today's box?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to that particular one? The opposed was Chris. Okay, so now you have a motion that's passed.
May I just clarify, that does not include what I said about the nurse setting out.
Right.
It's, it's.
It's in the vague interpretation.
Right. Do we want to send a letter as a committee?
My, my hesitancy would just be to wait to, to have that discuss. I feel like now we're back to item.
I know.
Seven, where we discuss the vaccine, just because next week is, has the potential to really change the dynamic of that letter.
Since we don't meet again at the way it is scheduled right now until December 2nd, do we want to be prepared for that not going, you know, whatever that outcome might be? Do we want to have a letter drafted by who in the?
May I just, so what I'm thinking is, maybe we do need to, just like I said earlier, punt this, see what happens next week, and then be ready to call a meeting to just discuss this if we need to.
I agree, I think.
We're calling a meeting.
We gotta wait, there's too much information that's relevant. But if someone wants to draft a letter, it would be a lot easier to work up a draft of something versus like you said, spitballing now, putting sentences together. Karen, you're trying to figure out what you said. For less, right? He hasn't approved a letter, in my eyes, after we leave this room. But we all probably want to see what the letter is in its format.
Oh, clearly.
Yeah, so it's like if someone could draft their, their passion card.
So, since I started this, um, I'll make myself available to Madam Chair and the Vice Chair to help craft a draft letter. I mean, I dug the hole, I gotta step in it, right?
Yeah, I think, I think we just need to be ready for, to, to call a meeting for the following week. So we may want to ask Jill for available times for that. Am I right, am I thinking?
I'm also kind of thinking, Madam Chair, that in, in the intervening 10 days-ish before this information comes out, we should also potentially do a little research on what, how some other schools are sharing this information that might actually be a bit beyond either a letter they wrote and/or what other things have they done. That might not fit our community, I get it, but that might be examples. So I can help with that, too. And anybody else who has resources or links or how other schools are doing it, I'd send it my way. In a non-open-meeting-law violating fashion.
Anything else on this chart?
Just on that topic, send it only to her.
That's right.
Don't communicate with each other, just one source for the information, others, who, there's no deliberation.
This was the longest Silver Lake Education Association.
That was funny, I remember. All righty, administrative review. We have not had a meeting. Career and technical education.
Yes, we had a meeting tonight. So I got a bunch of updates that I won't give too long, but there are about 300 students in total enrollment, which is about 27% of the high school. Um, there were a full class of freshman exploratories, which is 105 students, which is actually 30% of the ninth grade. Uh, 105 students will be 15 students per program, once they get assigned after the first semester. Uh, we also have 44 out-of-district students to come in. Forty from Pembroke, which is obviously one of our agreements. Uh, two from Manhattan, one from Middleborough, and one from Duxbury. And the cost out of district for people's curiosity is just shy of $13,000 per student, per state number, it's 12, 934 technically. Other updates, you know, the automotive program, that is recertification recently from ASE Education Foundation. And that is good for another five years. Allied Health, I think most people may know by now, we have partnered with Bay Path. We have a nursing center for the clinical partner part. Uh, the early education preschool is 100% full. Uh, the culinary program is continuing to bake weekly for Carmelas and Mama Miis. And the cafe is open for internal staff right now only, not for public. Uh, the metal fab is trying to work and rebuild one of our flatbed trucks for the middle school. Uh, the horticulture program is working more actively on campus, um, in terms of the school grounds. The carpentry program continues to work on the garage as their program this year on campus due to COVID. And they're also going to work in partnership with the Halifax Softball for a spring renovation project to redo the dugouts. Halifax here knows the project is repaired.
Oh, my gosh.
And the group deciding all the work, so they're going to do that as well. We continue to get almost $50,000 of permanent grants funding, uh, and about 30K of that has been to the allied health instructor, which is one half of one salary there. We do need to, um, tell the class, no, we need to update our admissions approval policy, how kids come in, how they get delegated, and how they get selected into the programs. We have more kids than we can really take sometimes. Uh, he's going to be here at our December meeting with his new updated policy. Uh, we have eight students out on co-op right now from CTE, and actually, six of them are in allied health, so they're out working, getting paid right now. Which is fantastic. Three are at Bay Path, and three are down in Plymouth, he said. Coming up next week, there is advisory committee meeting, which is the outside support that we get from businesses, owners, and so forth. They can have their meeting a little different, as you said, we're not invited. Because they're trying to not have the dinner, they're going to have separate, um, program meetings with a box dinner, box lunch, that kind of selection. Uh, I think that's all I got, um, but it was very encouraging from Elliot, in terms of what's going on for that.
Thank you, Chris. You've been a busy guy, thank you so much. Chairman's report, correspondence, I have no correspondence, I have already shared. Legislative, Akins report.
I'm going to try and follow Chris's lead, keeping it brief. The state is awash in money right now. There's more money in this state than there has ever been, both federally and local receipts. Uh, the projected revenues of the state have come in above benchmark for the past several months. A lot of people are saying, spend now. I'm advocating for our delegation to take their time and be thoughtful with this process because this money is not going to last forever. The federal funds will dry up eventually, and we need to be cautious of not falling off the fiscal cliff at the end. A lot of us can remember in 2008, when we had the economic crisis, there was a lot of federal funding, the race to the top funds. People hired staff, and then that money dried up. And it was a lot of layoffs, and it's pains for school districts and budgeting. So, a slow approach is what I'm advocating. Thinking about programming, professional development, spending things on one-time capital expenses, not necessarily staff. But we are awash in funds, and again, this is not going to last forever, so we need to be prudent about how we spend these dollars.
Very good. Thank you, that was perfect. Uh, negotiations, we have a executive session at the end of this, which will be not, not coming back in public session. PAC?
Yes, sorry, just looking at my notes from PAC. So we had a meeting last week, last week, it seemed like only last week, the exact date. Um, it was the first meeting of the year, um, it was a reorganization meeting of leadership. It was also the meeting where we got the auditor's report, uh, which was favorable, um, which is good. So that was the bulk, and then there was a board of trustees meeting, which we attended. And, um, that was pretty much what happened. So, not, not a lot of substance at that meeting, it's a lot of organization and housekeeping.
Thank you.
Not that that's not important.
Policy, okay. Revolving funds, no meeting. Safer. Right, yeah.
Safer?
Did you?
We had, we've lots of stuff on.
I know, try, try and boil that down to the readers.
All right, so you got Fred's opinion on the admin building, in terms of it is owned by this committee, whether we renovate, replace, or what have you. Safer to the three towns, there's a two-hour plus video you all can watch, get caught up on that one if you want. Uh, but it was a great meeting, overall, the tone was wonderful, the participation was wonderful, trying to get the town leaderships, selectmen, finance committees, town administrators on the same page with us to understand some of what we see ahead and sort of our capital concerns. We still need to work through sort of what we're going to do with the tennis courts, what we'll do with that capital plan going forward for this current year. And we have a meeting on the 18th of November, I believe, with three towns again. I don't know if we have confirmed attendance by people, but, um, it is really trying to get some of these items out in the open in a day and a way, all we're trying to do, it's almost like a publicity thing, but we want to be fair to town and not have that, the tennis court surprise like last spring, or, um, the revolving fund request, the revolving fund request, the stabilization request, excuse me. And also trying to figure out the, um, the resource officer, how we're going to pay this resource officer between three towns. That's something that's been kind of jumbled for a couple of years. So hopefully, we can get that knocked off in our.
I just want to say kudos to you all for getting that kind of meeting together because it is going to be so helpful to do that collaborative work ahead of time, um, as opposed to trying to race at the end to get everybody to agree. So, I mean, I know that's a lot of your time and a long meeting, and a lot of voices in the room, but so essential, and I think it's a great idea.
Chris did a fantastic job, Chair.
Yeah, he was outstanding.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
And I have the link if anybody wants it, but, um, in all the years I've seen this, this committee integrate with the three towns, that was one of the best collaborative forums I've, I've ever witnessed, so. It was excellent.
Keep that solid.
Excellent. Okay, uh, school staff times, uh, nothing to report, faculty's report?
In Summer's absence, I have the information, the four warrants that circulated tonight, where all accounts payable warrants, and they totaled $41,236.87.
Thank you, sorry, mid, mid break.
No worries.
I wish it wasn't right. Noon 31, no meeting, single signature.
Oh, that's me again. On October 5th, we had one warrant related to the NEAS visit that needed to be signed, and that was electronically sent to, um, the superintendent, Paula Hatch, Eric Crowe, and Summer Schmalling, and that was returned to sign. And then on October 14th, just last week, we had 20 vendor warrants totaling $1,251,770.42. And I think that's it, let me just make sure I got the number right. Oh, or, I'm sorry. All right, so the, the vendor warrants totaled $1,251,775.42, three payroll warrants totaling $2,510,901.58, for a total of $3,762,677. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dates to keep in mind, November 2nd is my wedding anniversary. But it's also an in-service date for teachers. November 11th, Veterans Day, November 24th, early release. The 20th, 26th, the Thanksgiving recess, and December 2nd is our next currently scheduled Silver Lake meeting. So with that, I would.